This Wednesday, November the sixteenth, Planning Commission to order, may I have a roll call please?
Chairman Amanda Jackson Denmark.
Here.
Vice Chairman Charlie Whitmore.
Here.
Commissioner Kathleen Duncan.
Here.
Commissioner Rich Delkor.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Jim Flynn.
Here.
Commissioner Lydia DePaul.
Here.
Notice regarding adjournment, the Planning Commission will not hear new items after nine thirty unless authorized by majority vote of the commission members present. Items which have not been heard before nine thirty may be continued to the next regular meeting or special meeting date as determined by the commission members. Notice regarding public comments, every member of the public who is recognized to speak shall address the chairman and in speaking, avoid disrespect to commission staff and other members of the meeting, state your name and address, and speaking for the record, comments are limited to three minutes. May I have an adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any further comment? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, may I have an adoption of the minutes from October the twenty-sixth?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, do we have any public comments that are not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on, we don't have any old business, so we have new business, number one on the agenda is Big Blue Marble Academy of Bluffton for the preliminary development plan. A request by eight fourteen services for approval of a preliminary development plan application, the project proposes the construction of a twelve thousand plus minus childcare facility. Jordan.
Okay, as you said, the applicant is eight one four services LLC, and they're requesting approval for a preliminary development plan to construct a twelve thousand plus or minus square foot childcare facility. The property where they are proposing to build this is Zone Jones Estate PUD, identified as the tax map number seen on your screen and located at the intersection of Slade City Highway and Mill Creek Boulevard. So up on your screen here, you can see that, um, this parcel has been subdivided, it doesn't show up in Bluffton Explorer, but the parcel that has been subdivided as has this general shape right here. Uh, the preliminary development plan is located within Jones Estate PUD and Cypress Ridge master plan area and is subject to the standards set forth in the Jones Estate Development Agreement as well as concept plan. The subject parcel located between Oakdale Highway, Mill Creek Boulevard and Slater Street with access to the parcel from Slater Street. Staff comments on the preliminary development plan were reviewed at the August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two DRC meeting. The applicant provided a response to comments, updated exhibits to address the comments provided, and was reviewed at the October twelfth, twenty twenty-two DRC meeting as a follow-up. Uh, as the site is located within the highway corridor overlay district, a certificate of appropriateness, HCD, will be required in the future. Here is the site plan showing the two points of access off of Slater Street. Uh, they are proposing an outdoor play area right here, here's the building entrance, entrance on street parking currently exists out on Slater Street here, uh, with a little bit here as well. These townhomes are currently under construction. The Planning Commission shall consider the criteria set forth in section three ten three A of UDO when assessing the application for preliminary development plan. The applicable criteria are followed on the following slides, you can see them here, I had them in the staff report, there's nothing worth mentioning as far as findings, I can go with them and answer any questions you might have. Um, but staff has found they meet the general criteria of each of the criteria that you see on the screen here. Uh, the Planning Commission has the authority to take the following action, approve the application submitted by the applicant, approve the application conditions, or deny the application submitted by the applicant. And town staff finds that the requirements of section three ten three A of unified development orders have been met and recommends that the Planning Commission approve the application with the following condition. And that's to preserve as many trees on site as physically possible to meet canopy coverage mitigation requirements, and those landscaping requirements are required at time of final development plans in it all. Any questions?
Um, is the applicant here, do they wish to?
Yes, they are.
Applicant?
Good evening, my name is Samantha Kozlowski, one six nine five, twelve mile road, Berkeley, Michigan, four eight zero seven two. I'm a development manager with eight fourteen services LLC, um, just wanted to say good evening and thank you to everyone with the town of Bluffton that we've worked with so far. I think we've made a lot of great revisions to the concept plan from its original iteration. So we've worked with Jordan, several, several other members from planning, stormwater, engineering, and traffic to get a great site plan together. And, um, thank you again, I'm here for any questions if you have any.
Okay, thanks. Do we have any public comment on this line?
We do for this one.
Um, can we go ahead and have that? Valerie Bridges.
Hi, I live, um.
I have your name and.
Valerie Bridges, two six two Wooden Wheel Lane in Cypress Ridge. Um, last time I was here, that plan looked completely different, um, and our biggest concerns were the traffic, um, and the backup onto Mill Creek Boulevard, and I understand the fire department also had issues with, with that. Traffic at all, so this is the first time I'm seeing the map. Um, our concern is particularly at high traffic times that the traffic not back up onto Mill Creek Boulevard, it is a one lane entry, and so therefore that would be, um, a big traffic concern. Um, so it looks like they have addressed, um, some of that, at least more than one way to get in and out of the traffic, which was our big concern, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Jordan or the applicant at this time, or did you like to discuss it?
I have a question. Um, maybe a question for the applicant, uh, in the operations segment, segment and attachment one, you talk about how parents cannot just drop off their children. They have to park and then walk their kids into the building, you have thirty parking spots and a hundred and ninety-five children, how does that work?
So, um, the childcare facility operates a little bit different than a typical school, they don't have a specific start time, so parents and guardians are kind of dropping off different hours in the morning and then different, picking up at different hours in the afternoon, they do have a peak times, so peak times in the morning would be like your six to nine AM, and then peak times in the afternoon would be anywhere from three to six PM. Um, this is the usual number of parking spaces that is desired by this tenant, so this works well with their operations. They don't typically have any issues with the number of parking spaces provided, so thirty should service this development.
Well, can I, can I take you back one second? So your, your, our report, you put in that there are a hundred and ninety-five children and twenty-five, or twenty-seven staff. If there are thirty spots, twenty-seven of which are taken up by staff, I assume none of them are ADA, but that may be a bad assumption, that leaves three spots to which are handicap parking spots.
There are.
So you effectively have one spot for a hundred and ninety-five people to be dropped off.
Sure, let me explain a little bit more, so the staff is actually on a rotating schedule, so they wouldn't be taking up all of those parking spots at the same time.
So, how many staff would be there at any given time?
It's typically, so it's gonna kind of depend on the childcare ratio for the state, so since we haven't gotten into the architectural plans yet, that actual number isn't determined, so that's kind of something that we'll figure out once we get through and review the state codes. Um, typically, they say about fifteen to twenty-five staff members is typical for this type of operation. It also kind of depends on local enrollment numbers too, so will depend on how many students are enrolled in the program.
So, Jordan, from your point of view, if they don't know that number yet, how can we approve the amount of parking, because is that not a factor of?
So it is, they've kind of prepared for a worst-case scenario in terms of, okay, peak, I mean, she said fifteen to twenty, and the narrative they said, okay, twenty-seven instructors, they do meet those parking standards. In the PUD, it's a space for every faculty member, plus two for drop-off, so they meet that threshold with what's been submitted. Now, if they came back and said, okay, based off of, when we get to final and architectural, because this will have to come back through highway corridor overlay, so it will come back to you all for architecture, landscape, and light, and lighting. So if it would come back and for some reason, hey, we're gonna have thirty-five, you know, teachers, then it'd be that hard conversation of, well, the site doesn't support that, you don't have room for that, we need to adjust your parking.
But who, so that gets handled at, when it comes back to?
Staff and DRC.
Okay.
But it doesn't come back to planning?
It might come back to planning just from the standpoint of the highway corridor overlay and looking at architecture, and usually by that point you have a floor plan, more or less, that, that those numbers would be finalized by that point in time, usually.
Uh, I'll tell you what my concern is, um, and first of all, I, I understand what you're saying, but truly, if you have more kids, you have more staff, and so it's when it's at that maximum that there's potentially an issue here.
Sure.
Okay? Um, my concern is, pretty much everything else that we've approved that has been a daycare facility, even if it's not a quote-unquote drop-off, there's some kind of a, a traffic lane or a drop-off lane where they can park for a minute and come in. And I don't necessarily see that in this plan. Um, I do like that there are two entrances now instead of the one, so that can be, that can be done. Uh, but there is a concern, and I, I share, Commissioner Delkor's concern of.
I'm gonna piggyback on you, because even conservatively, if you have half of the thirty spots taken by instructors, you're down to fifteen spots. And you could have a peak of thirty at any given time, and it goes right back to our, our resident who just made public comment, you're gonna be backing up on, on one of the streets. It just feels like, since you've made the decision, or the operator has made the decision not to have drop-offs, we might have a parking issue.
So could we recommend or, um, some type of drop-off, like, like we were talking about with other projects before, like a pull-off?
But if the operator chooses not to do that, are, are we out of bounds telling them how to operate their childcare? I'm asking you, are legal?
Yeah, no, I, uh, thank you, Commissioner Delkor, and just again for the record, as we do every meeting, um, Rich St. Bruce, Bing, Filing Brooks, I'm a Bruce here, uh, on behalf of the town of Bluffton, but representing the Planning Commission. I, y'all have given broad latitude to making certain comments about, and, and certain decisions when approving these development plans, preliminary development plans. Uh, my apprehension about dictating drop-offs and traffic, and, and kind of internal traffic patterns like that on the site, in particular with a, you know, the daycare where you are going to have, you're not gonna have parents letting their kids out of the car so they can run in, you gotta go, you got, as a parent who does this every single morning, unbuckle the child, I'll take him out, bring him inside, uh, hand him the lunchbox, and then walk out. I mean, there's a, there's a process, so you do need the parking, um, because it, you know, a drop-off usually takes a few minutes, at the very least, but as far as the traffic patterns, the internal traffic patterns, I, I've, absent a compelling reason within the traffic impact study or any of the documents that are provided to you, my, my recommendation would be caution and dictating how they, how they manage traffic internally.
And that was my impression too, which would leave me to say, need to know how many instructors, need to have some kind of prediction about what is the peak drop-off, and that potentially more parking is, is, it feels like the things that we can influence.
Yeah, I, and, uh, this is, again, this, this is almost like public comment, because it's good, it's more just about personal experience with the drop-off time, because it isn't like school where you have a twenty-minute window, you do have the two and a half to three-hour period, and everybody has to be in by nine AM. Well, you got until six to nine, the folks who work in, you know, may work in Savannah, and have to be there at six-thirty, will be dropping their children off at six, or, you know, and then you have people who are working in, uh, maybe locally, seven-thirty, eight. And so you do have a, a, a different schedule, and same with pickup, but I do appreciate and recognize y'all's concerns about that, because at twenty-seven instruct, uh, twenty-seven staff and thirty-some odd parking spots, you're, there's gonna be some time where it's tight, so.
Well, my, and my concern along those lines are the, the street front parking there, our staff's gonna end up parking there. And so is that fair to the people that live in the townhomes across the street? I, I, I guess what I would say is, I, I wish you would consider, between now and final, uh, time of final, um, adding some more parking, figuring a way to put in maybe even five or six more spots to make those numbers make more sense. And I don't know how the rest of commission feels, but that, that would give me a little bit more comfort level.
Kind of on those lines, you know, moving forward as it goes through MS four process, and then goes through having that final development plan, um, processed, reviewed, going through DRC, uh, understanding their programming before obviously it comes back with the COFO, those are the items that we could have addressed at DRC prior to it coming to you. So that way, from an architectural standpoint, landscaping, that's all, all those items are addressed, so your current, your concerns are gonna be picked up by, you know, three of you at DRC as well. Um, so, you know, those are something, those are things that, you know, from a conditional standpoint, that, you know, during the final development plan, that, you know, it's, as it's being programmed, that we know the true number of, um, individuals, the capacity, all of that, because, you know, their building, their building footprint might be shrinking, uh, for various reasons.
Right. Well, and just a little background, I, you know, the internet can be our friend or our foe, but I went on there and looked at probably twenty different Blue Marble Academies. And a good number of them have one-way drop-off lanes and drop-off canopies or those type of things, and, and some of them didn't, but it just, we wanna do right by the neighbors as well, is what it comes down to.
Um, my comment is just, I, I, I got similar comments to, um, Mr. Delkor and Mr. Whitmore here, is that I'm concerned about the parking, particularly, um, I think Charlie brings up a great point about two of those spaces being handicap spaces, and so that does really only leave you one real drop-off space. Um, and that, and that's if you're at the twenty-seven, but you said twenty, up to twenty, tw- fifteen to twenty-five, you didn't even stop at twenty, so that still didn't alleviate much concern in my mind. And I, I mean, I don't have too many kids, but I do have dogs, and I've been to doggy day camp, and I have seen the backup of six cars in the drive aisle, and it's very convenient, and it's, it can get people very stressed out. it can get people very stressed out and aggravated, um, on those short-time windows that they have, so, um, and I know especially the sensitivity specifically with this proximity to a neighborhood with people, residents that are trying to navigate through here, that could be extremely frustrating to them and an impediment to their quality of life. So, I like, my companions here would like to see some parking looked at for that. Additionally, um, and these are just small things that I'm sure will get worked out, um, as we go through the process, but the, one, you're only showing one part, handicap parking space, but you do have to have two, um, you don't have it striped with the handicap symbol on the other side. I'd actually recommend, and I know that you have to have handicap parking in the most convenient location to the front door, um, in this particular case, because in order to do that, it's directly across the drive aisle where people are gonna be driving in and out, I prefer to see it to the right of the bu- building, um, just to make that a little more conveniently accessed, a little less, you navigate with vehicular conflicts. Um, tactile dome should be at every crosswalk, so there's, I, I can see it at the main entrance, but I didn't see the one at the far-right entrance, but nitpicking at that point. Um, cleanup line work like the fence, because it's unclear where that fence begins and ends, and so I've got, you know, potential concerns about what that, how that addresses where the kids are playing in relationship to the site, so, it was unclear as to what was happening there with that fence.
Absolutely, so just for some clarification on the fencing, um, there are exits from each classroom, so the exits would be fenced all the way around the building, and then fencing into the playground area, too. The playground area, once we get more specific details on that, it is actually separated into three different play areas that have age-specific equipment, so all of that would be fenced in, there would be no opportunity for kids to run out to the parking lot or anything like that, so we can definitely define that a little bit better once we get to the final development plan.
What's the surface of that play?
It's a turf surface.
Like actual grass?
Yes.
Real grass?
It's turf, yes.
There's, there's fake turf, the fake grass, too, which people call turf as well, and, so, that's why I just was asking.
Absolutely, and we'll be able to get you guys full details on playground structures, um, the material of the?
Ground and everything like that.
Uh, material on the fencing and all those items when we have the final development plan.
The reason I was asking about specifically what material that is, with the fake grass, they, they sometimes install that with a concrete underneath, so it doesn't drain, um, so it might be a slope-to-drain, but it's not a pervious surface, so that's why I was asking.
Okay, anyone else have questions down here?
I think, I guess also mine would be the parking, but also the, would probably, as Commissioner, uh, Delkor said, I think that they probably would go up to the street if they had to, meaning it's the teachers, meaning it'll be easy to get in and out, too, if they could park this, so I guess the parking is probably the biggest concern as far as that might go.
Thank you.
So since this is a preliminary, um, development plan, and obviously parking is a concern of ours, that would just be in part of our recommendation, or our, yeah, our recommendation, I mean?
I, I, I think you can make that recommendation, again, as, um, Jordan, Jordan pointed out, that they do meet the parking calculations that are, um, set forth in the, in the judge of state documents, uh, so, uh, you can either just have a recommendation to staff, I mean, I think staff has heard your comments loud and clear, as has the applicant, uh, and I'm, and I would hope that they would be addressed before the final development plan, but, again, a little bit apprehensive about, um, you know, conditioning it on changing the parking require, the parking when there is, when there are in compliance with the parking requirements.
All right, well, with that, do I have a motion?
Oh, can I make one more comment?
Sure.
This is not a contingent on approval. Um, the parking space where the handicap is noted, adjacent to that, you've got all the utilities that are centralized in that bed, the sidewalk, so there's no place to put a tree there, so just be mindful that you allow enough room that those islands can have trees.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, recommend for approval, actually, it's not recommend, that we approve, um, the project with the condition that they preserve as many trees on-site as feasibly possible to meet canopy and coverage mitigation requirements.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
You don't wanna con- add a condition to work with staff on adding parking?
I, I don't think that, uh, because they meet the technical requirements, I don't think we really should.
And like they said, they, they've heard our concerns, so I think that they won't do that.
It doesn't require the addition of the parking, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
It wouldn't require the addition of the parking, it merely is coordinating.
But they're gonna be doing that at development plan level, is what, I mean, because that's when they're gonna have their numbers for what actual can be at that building, but currently, they do meet.
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
I think staff understands that we're concerned about parking, so if there's any way that y'all can help improve that situation, that's our recommendation. Okay. Are you okay?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you come down from Michigan just for this?
Yes, I did.
And you're not in a hurry to go back, are you?
I'm not at all. It's a little bit chilly here, but it's much more chilly at home, but.
Yeah, that's very nice. I'll stay awhile.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have, uh, New Riverside Village, parcel seven, preliminary development plan, a request by Brian Cersei of Core States Group on behalf of the property owner, Solomon Property Holdings. For approval of a dev- preliminary development plan application, this project consists of a two-story, fifteen thousand square foot medical office building and supporting parking. Property is owned New Riverside Plan Unit Development and consists of approximately 1.56 acres. Jordan?
Okay, you took all of my first slides.
Trying to hurry up for you.
To the second one. Um, here is a map of the location, you might be familiar, this corner parcel right here is Refuel, you can kinda see them on their site plans, New Riverside Village, roundabout at eighty-six, uh, and, uh, May River Crossing right there. Uh, application, as you previously said, is for preliminary development plan located within New Riverside PUD, and is subject to the standard set forth in the New Riverside PUD Development Agreement and Concept Plan, and the subject parcel is bounded by a May River Road and New Riverside Village Way. Staff comments on the preliminary development plan were reviewed at the August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two DRC meeting. Applicant provided a response to comments, revised site plans, and a parking assignment letter from the master developer a- at that time. As the site is located within the highway corridor overlay district, a certificate of appropriateness, uh, HCOD is required. So here is the site plan, you can see this is the Refuel, um, parcel, here is the proposed office with entry right here, as well as they can then facilitate and move through their site and get out to this entrance as well. Planning Commission shall consider the criteria set forth in section three-ten-three-A of UDO in assessing the application for a preliminary development plan, um, the applicable criteria are gonna be found on the next slide. Uh, just like the last one, I'll be free to, happy to answer any question you might have about any of the specific criteria, um, but staff has, uh, found that they have satisfied all those conditions. Your action here tonight can be to approve the application as submitted by the applicant, approve the application with conditions, deny the application as submitted by the applicant. Town staff finds that the requirements of section three-ten-three-A of UDO have been met and recommends the planning commission approve the application with the following condition, uh, just that a certificate of appropriateness highway corridor overlay district is required prior, prior to final development plan approval. I'll have to answer any questions you may have.
The applicant here, and would they like to speak?
Having one correction on that, the, the final development plan is required to be approved prior to the certificate of appropriateness, so.
Yes.
Yes, sorry, I forgot those.
James, I think to record acting group, unlike the lady report coming from Michigan down here, Brian is in South Florida, I hear it's much warmer there than it is here, so he's still there, and I'm here to answer any questions, but I appreciate your time this evening. Uh, I know you all have looked at the Refuel site, uh, we ended up working with, um, Core States because they were doing the civil refuel, we thought that integrating the site design together is the, the best way to approach this project. Uh, primary concerns last time were parking and, uh, making sure that we had everything squared up there, they did change from the original parking requirements of three and a half per thousand, um, I believe this was in front of the commission, a month and a half, two months ago, maybe, went from three and a half thousand shared parking to an overall hundred thousand, uh, but no off-site parking, so we got an assignment letter that twelve of the, uh, off-site parking spaces are designated for this parcel, so they can't be counted towards other parcels within the community, so, I think they cleaned all that up with town staff a month or two ago. Uh, I'm here to answer any questions, um, on the set plan and anything else, just a quick summary, there's a one-story, uh, dental office that's on the south of the page there, and then a two-story, uh, medical office to be determined tenants to the north of the page, fronted with a, kind of a, a park area in front of the building and foreground, and then nice lagoon to the west that they'll be looking at, so. There we are.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this one? Okay, well, anyone wanna start with any questions, comments for?
Well, related to what you just said about the, um, the twelve assigned parking spaces, I know seven of them we have defined, are we keeping track of the names?
We are, so.
Are they not double counted?
Correct, so we're working with the decorant, uh, for the entire, uh, New Riverside Village, so we're keeping track of, of all parking, so, um, so they, they, we're specifically working throughout the entire site to make sure everything's in compliance.
I, I figured we were, I just wanted to ask.
Yes, absolutely.
Anyone down there, Lydia, anything?
Nope. It's right at me.
Um, the stormwater, I'm assuming that's what's, the drawing that had the black blocks on it, that's going where those garden beds are, is that correct?
That's correct, there's the overall master plan, and then we have some requirements for on-site, and so it is going in the park, uh, area underneath for storage chambers, and then discharged out to the master stormwater plant.
Okay, and then you mentioned there's the dentist office and medical office, but and one's one-story and one's two-story, where does that delineation begin and end, and are they being built at the same time?
Yes, okay, yep, so, uh, trying not to shoot you in the eyes, just thinking. So this, this is the one-story section here, uh, there is a little bit of a raised garden bit, this structure is about eighteen inches out of the ground, um, there's a raised garden bit, so when you're getting your teeth drilled, you'll have something nice to look at before and after. This is a one-story connector, and then this section here is the two-story, um, medical office.
It's labeled the opposite.
I think it's labeled like the whole thing is that. It's a little confusing, but, uh, that, that's.
Okay.
This is one-story, this is two-story section.
Are they being built at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, one question I have, and I'm a little concerned about, or one area of this plan, is that dumpster access being on that far side, um, one, it, I think it's gonna take one heck of a good driver to follow the path that was outlined, and I appreciate the fact that the path was outlined, actually, um, because I would've asked that question regardless. Um, but, and it's not just the narrow route that they have to follow in order to get in there, but it's the fact that in order to get back out, they've gotta use those four parking spaces, which if somebody's parked there, is gonna make that real challenging, so I don't think of that as a...
We, we looked at this area and actually revised this, because the other primary concern in the initial preliminary development plan review was, uh, fire truck access. And this is a hundred and fifty feet, or just five hundred, which is the, uh, max for a fire truck to pull in and pull back, which is bigger than the dump truck, and now granted the firefighters are much better drivers probably than the refuge drivers, but, um, uh, you know, we just felt like it being, we looked at the spot here, but putting it kind of on the main access when you come in here didn't seem to be appropriate, and obviously down here didn't seem to be appropriate, and so, I, I, I hear you, um, just architecturally and on the site plan, it seemed like it meets the criteria, and it would be unfortunate if the dumpster became a major component in the sightlines, and so rely on our talented refuge drivers.
And nobody parking in those four parking spaces.
Do you, do you have abundance of parking, or do you have just what you need?
You're right on it. Yeah, I, we talked to staff about maybe if we could get, um, a couple compact spaces, but in the overall.
Can they're banning golf.
It's not really defined, um, and, you know, but could we get a little bit more room in here? But, you know, we, we would have to come in, and then they would back out here, and then exit out.
The other, um, I have, I do have, I still, I, I still find that an uncomfortable situation, because you're, you're depending upon situational shifts to the site in order for that to really function. Um, the other issue I have relates, again, to the fact of those four spots, just the fact that they're like two feet from that adjacent drive aisle, um, I, would staff has, staff looked to see if that meets requirements?
So it will have to be five feet in between there, um, landscaping island, but that section of drive out, they have some room to accommodate that, um, that I think we can work with the applicant to make sure that it, that landscape island would meet ordinance requirements, and they can tighten up some sections that they have a wider width.
And we're working with, why we went with Core States is, they've got a fueling issue that came up here, that they've gotta get this fueling truck out, and this section right here is actually on our applicant's property, and there are some designated easements through here, but not really this little section here.
Mm-hmm.
So, we can bring that concern back to Refuel and Core States to see if they can get their turning radiuses for the fuel-delivering trucks in there and widen that island a little bit.
Yeah, can I ask, since you already have something going on in that area, could the dumpster be in that area but access from the gas station side?
Uh, I, I think maybe something that, an alternative is, uh, this island right here, maybe we can look to change the radius, the radius of the actual concrete, but then have it striped, um, just to, to represent, like, the actual turning movement, what that would do is, by reducing that, the radius right there, it gives a little bit more space for that vehicle to be able, the, the, the trash, trash truck to be able to get in there, so.
I was just looking for an alternate location, if that even was a possibility, since you're working with the?
We could, I, our first instinct was to put it right here.
Right.
It just.
But that's what I'm saying, but it would be access from this gas side and not the other side, and you could landscape around it from the dentist office side.
Access it from here.
Yeah. I'm just thinking, because there's more room to maneuver there.
I, I would certainly bring that to, um, again, it's, it's one of those, we have two different developers, two different, but we can have Core States doing both, and so.
But yeah, I mean, I don't know if there is some easement that allows them to use your property and then you use their property here.
There is active easements.
Yeah.
Kind of, there's an easement here for access.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Crossport here.
Yeah.
But there's really nothing here, so they're working through all that, so maybe in that we could.
Yeah.
Get that.
And that, I mean, I don't know how, you know, it might help you with some more parking down the line, or at least a backup to help, you know, substitute the parking you might have to take out there, put it at the end.
We lose two here, and we probably end up at two right here.
Yeah. Just a thought.
Okay, we can certainly explore that with, um, multiple parties involved in these projects.
Hey, while they're asking you for something, you should ask them.
Exactly.
Okay, anybody else? Kathleen, are there questions answered? Okay, may I have a motion? Anybody? Jason, you look, you're itching to make a motion.
I'm gonna motion.
All right.
Well, I figure one way or another, we're gonna get this, the, the planning commission approved the application with the following condition, a certificate of appropriateness.
No, no, no.
His.
Our language is.
His language is in, is backwards.
So whatever motion you would like to make, you can, kind sir.
Well, thank you, I, I do appreciate that very much, actually. Have a question.
What is that motion supposed to be?
So is there any way that we can make a recommendation about that the applicant will work with the, well, I mean?
Could, could, could we say that, um, we'd like the, we approve it, but we would like the applicant to work with staff to optimize the trash and parking access?
That sounds wonderful. That sounds wonderful. Is that a motion?
I move that planning commission approve the application with the condition that the applicant works with staff to optimize the access to the trash and make it easy for the trash haulers to get in and out.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
We have two conditions recommended on the staff report. No, that's a wrong, never mind, never mind.
Let me add to that, that the dumpster, when moved to that location, and I can tell Mr. Kins would also probably appreciate this, that the dumpster is also adequately screened.
Well, that's probably covered, isn't it?
I think that comes in the development plan. I mean, like, when they're going to final.
And he's got things to say.
And the certificate of appropriateness.
Yeah, so we're going to catch it for prelim. I mean, is that something you want to put in the motion, because we have to amend and read, or is that something that...
If it's already required by ordinance, I don't need to add it.
Madam Chair, you're correct. So we already have a motion in the second, so you have to amend it if you want to add it, but staff has confirmed that it is part of, it will be caught during the review process. And because it's a town of Bluffton Park that is behind the dumpster, I would imagine that they will be very, very focused on it, so.
Okay. Does that sound fun?
That's fun.
I have a question. Do we have to add the condition that staff noted, but with the correct wording? No. No, because this is just a prelim.
Re-owning is already part of the procedural process.
Because we're just the preliminaries. Everybody else good?
I have one question. Can we go up now?
All in favor? All right, any opposed? Okay.
Very good. The same calls the question. I'll remember it.
Okay, so the next one is New York City Pizza at May River Crossing. A request by Stax Building and Development on behalf of the owners, PR2, May River Crossing for approval of a certificate of appropriateness. The site is an existing commercial structure, which has a proposed tenant outfit to include 290 square foot addition on the front of the structure facing South Carolina Highway 170, and a modified right-side elevation to include a roll-up door and counter for outdoor seating.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, sure, go ahead, Katie.
So the project location, I've got it highlighted on the screen here, this is part of the May River Cross, River Crossing, sorry, we were just across the street a moment ago, so this is part of the May River Crossing development plan and master plan area. I've highlighted specifically which building this is, because there is a parent parcel that these are all sort of part of, and so it is this building right here, and this portion of the building right here that's being proposed modification. As you can see here, this is that, the traffic circle is in the bottom right side of the screen here, this is that small little parkage area that is there, and then this is the building. You can see where the columns of the colonnade area pop out beyond the footprint of the building, so this is already space that is under a roof. It is under a roof, but outside area. And then the proposed modification is the roll-up door that will take place right here, as well as the proposed imposed space, which will house a cooler, but because it is in the highway corridor, it cannot just be a metal cooler, it has to be articulated into the architecture of the building. We did double-check, it is outside of the 75-foot buffer. What is being shown here is actually the silt fence, because they know that they need to have silt fencing on when they do the project, because water shed likes to see it. So that's just the temporary, the actual structure is that gray shaded area there. These are the elevations of the structure, so this, the front elevation, this is, or the back elevation technically, because this is facing internal to the development. The countertop is what you can see from this elevation, so it is this little tiny blimp right there, that's the only thing that's changing on the rear, which is the front, the internal portion of this building. The far side elevation is this one, so this is if you're standing at the furthest point of the building, two tenant spaces away, you'll see this, this is just the exterior portion at the rear, so again, or the front, but the rear of the building. The highway runs along here, and then on the reverse, you can see the window right here that's being modified to that roll-up, as well as the additional cooler space at the back of the building here. For the back elevation, which is the side that faces the highway, this is the portion that will be the added cooler space, so they have made this roofline match the portion of the building that is a corner piece. They've included the same siding material, as well as the little canopy there, so that it has some appearance that is a portion of this real building, and not just something that was added on the actual effect. We have the equipment details, because in addition to this, they are doing some internal changes, so there is a little bit of equipment that's being added to the roof. None of the equipment that is being added will be visible, so you can see right here the hood detail that is popping up through the roof, but it is not going to extend past the parapet that exists already on the structure. The color board that they've got is right here, this is the same color scheme as the original approvals, so the building colors will match that, which are already being proposed on the site. I actually found the physical color board, I meant to bring it down here just to show you that I'm a hoarder, sitting on my desk from it, and so I did double-check these colors today. It does match, I did clean my desk out. The design standards, which are applicable, are in the section 17, 3 of the Unified Development Ordinance, because this is a certificate of appropriateness for the highway corridor overlay, so it needs to be in line with the design standards in Article 5, because this is located in the Joneses State, which is the New Riverside, I'm sorry, the Joneses State PUD, it is in the May River...
Church Point Track, May River.
May River Crossing Master Plan, Church Point Track of that. The Artified Design Standards do not apply, but it is applicable for the development agreement, concept plan, and master plan, which I've outlined in your staff report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Town staff has found that with the following conditions, it could be approved. They just need a letter from the decorant, just noting that they have reviewed this and are okay with it. That is the ALB for the area, which is the Helverson Holdings LLC, and then the any signs that would be permitted will need to go through the signed permit review process, which is a standard comment that I have on most applications if they are commercial. I don't know if I said this, but David is here, on behalf of the project, he's sitting behind me, so any questions that you have?
He said everything is going to be hidden by the roof, and I just noticed for the first time on the mechanicals, the new air conditioner is going to be underground outside. Is that allowable in that project, or should it be up on the roof? Page M101, if that helps, on attachment 2.
It does not help me, because I do not have the... Excuse me, I'm sorry. Which elevation is it?
It's the attachment titled, hang on, site plan and architectural is attachment 2 in the...
It's the HBAC plan.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just noticed it. If you go attachment 2 down to page M101, it's about the seventh page down.
It would need to be screened or on the roof, and you're right, I just thought, I apologize, thank you for touching that, Charlie.
Yeah, sorry, I read these all day long, and I just happened to notice that. It was intended to be on the roof, on the one, on the roof.
So as it's located there, you could make that a condition, that it is relocated or included in the screen.
Relocate HP3 to the roof.
So which roof would it be?
The way they're doing it, it can go right above, that'd have to be a roof penetration, that's all.
That is, that site plan is inaccurate, so if you want to make the, if a motion is preferred, it could be made to exclude page M101, because that is not the right layout for this. It looks like that's an old sheet that was included in there, because that's not what the outside of that structure looks like.
Okay, well, where are we showing, do we have something showing HP3 in the upper place? Because if not, I feel more comfortable making the condition. She said it should have been included in there. This one in attachment 2.
That's all about.
Attachment 2, page 3 is incorrect, is what she's saying. Or page 7.
That's the one that's included in the grant application, meaning it's been altered to stay at that time.
That document is page 516.2, 101.
I'm sorry, that is an error, and our intent was to put the equipment on top of the roof, behind the hip roof that's there, and we would relocate that unit to be above the coolers on the new addition, so there wouldn't be any equipment visible.
Okay, then it shouldn't be a problem with us making the condition of approval, let us just make sure you do it the way you say you're going to do it.
Yes, sir. Or it should have been David Robertson with Stax Building and Development.
Is that the plan that you reviewed versus what was printed?
I think that's the case, because see, the floor plan that you're looking at, this is the floor plan right here, and I think the printed version of the abbreviation doesn't include that page, because that is, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, y'all.
I mean, it's not a big deal, we just make sure that it's...
Clarify, that's perfect.
I think it's, I think it would be best to go ahead and just include it as a condition. We know it's, we've got the applicant here saying that they will mean that condition, so might as well make it clear for the record.
Yep. So there'd be three conditions right now, the letter of approval, the signed permit, and moving the air conditioning unit. And that's all I had. I don't know.
I have.
Good catch, Charlie.
I have a question. It's probably more of a Katie question, but I'll let you finish typing.
It's okay.
She can multitask.
I can multitask. Can you go back to the site plan? So the building is 75 feet, 2 inches, and there's a 75-foot setback, I heard you say, but that walkway, there appears to be a walkway that extends, you know, probably five foot into that, and you called it a buffer, you didn't call it a setback. Is that, would that walkway be allowed in the buffer?
It's a 75-foot building.
It's a 75-foot commercial setback, and there's a 50-foot buffer, or 60-foot buffer.
Okay, then, that's my question, thank you.
Anything further? Do we have a motion?
Also, before, the next time this gets submitted, can we see all those buffers and setbacks on the site plan, so that I don't ask this question again in the future? Because I won't remember.
And Madam Chair, just for the commission's benefit, the three conditions that I've heard are the HBAC, it'll be relocated to the roof, screened, the debt approval from May River Village or May River Crossing, and then the application's manual requires a sign permit, so.
Any other discussion before we...
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the submittal from New York City Pizza for the outfit with the following three conditions, that they provide a letter of approval from a repricing master plan decorant responsible for the covenants and restrictions for the community, that per the application's manual, a town of Bluffton sign permit must be submitted to for review and approval, and that air conditioning unit HP3, the new air conditioner be located on the roof and fully screened from view.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. We're good?
Thank you.
Okay, so number four is the River Dog Brewing Company. A request by Dan Keever on behalf of the owners, Michael Bradley Holdings, for approval of a certificate of appropriateness for a 5.18 acre development consisting of 20,000 square feet production brewery, 30,000 square foot space allocated to restaurants, tenants, retail tenants, business offices, and a tasting room, and the associated parking, driveways, lighting, and landscaping. Katie, take it away.
Madam Chairman, the project location I've highlighted here on the map for you, so you have Buck Island Road, and then the street below it is May River Road, which makes this the highway corridor. Because buildings cannot be built over property lines, they are going to have to combine lots, as was indicated in there, which makes this whole site need to become compliant with the highway corridor standards. This is the site plan for it, so May River Road against the bottom of your screen. There is a pavilion shown here, this is the retention pond that is already on the site. There's parking at the top edge towards Buck Island Road here. This is Jennifer Ford's, a tax round with Parker's Gas Station in the bottom left-hand corner of this square set that I will present you. I have the first floor plan, and you can see it on here very soon, I apologize, and then the second floor plan is here, so you've got two floors in there with the roof plan, which I've included. I did zoom in on that roof plan just a little bit, so you could see it a little better. And I'm going to flip through these slides on the side of quickly, they are all included in your packet, and if you're watching online, they are on the town of Bluffton website in the Agenda Center through the planning commission link for tonight. I don't have to go back to any of these that you need, but because there are a lot of slides, I zoomed in on things for you, I'll move quickly through them. The overall elevations, so this is the front elevation, which is, they're labeling it as the front elevation, it is the front of the structure, however, it is the Buck Island Road, Parker's West elevation, so it's the left side of the lot, so the front elevation of the building. This one down here is the right side of the building, the May River Road or South elevation, so this is what faces towards the Beer Garden Pavilion and then May River Road. I have the, towards Red Cedar, of course, it does not, it is not visible from Red Cedar, but it is towards that direction, which is your east elevation, and then the north elevation, which is currently a vacant parcel above it for the most part, so that is the north elevation, is how I've called it. Then they, in their plan set, they broke down the plan so that you could zoom in on the elements and see some of those materials listed out more clearly. The way that this is on the screen is the top is the full elevation, with a portion of it zoomed in on the bottom of the slide. So for this one, you can see where it cuts off, right here, so this is the portion here. This is that front or Buck Island Road side of the structure, with the second half of that here. You can see that the main entrance is here, with the tenant spaces on the left towards the Beer Garden area, which will be on the very right side of the screen here. This is the right side elevation, which this is the side that faces towards May River Road, the Beer Garden would be in front of this, so the pavilion will be at the, I guess, the bottom, if you're making it flat here. And then this is the zoomed-in version of that, with the zoomed-in version of the left-hand side of the right-hand elevation. And you can see they've made the, silos is what I want to call them, because I'm from Iowa, y'all, but the big metal things that hold liquid are invisible here, so you can see the wall detail behind that, where they've got the barn doors showing there. Going to come up with a word of them here somewhere. This is the rear elevation, so this is the side that is facing towards Red Cedar. So this is, you're seeing the top of the roofline that faces towards the parking area and towards Buck Island Road. You've got the three garage doors for the entry, the drop-offs and things like that, as well as pickups, and then you've got the tenant spaces with the back, those entrances there. You have the zoomed-in version again for both those, and then this final side is the, it would be the right side of the lot, the north side of, no, it's the north side of the lot, the left side of the building, it's the side that faces towards that vacant parcel. So this is towards the top of your screen on that site plan. These are the elevations for the pavilion, so this pavilion sits up towards May River Road, this is the building-facing side, where the north side of your, is facing north, this is facing towards Parker's, facing towards May River Road, so you've got the brick walls at the roof, which will be visible from May River Road through that buffer, and then facing towards Red Cedar, you'll get the side view of this. Again, it is not visible from Red Cedar, but facing that direction. And then the dumpster enclosure elevations, because it is a structure on the site, so it has architectural details, so the dumpster enclosure is proposed to be a six-foot minimum wood-trimmed dumpster enclosure. This is the color board for the site, so it is primarily brick Cherokee Savannah Gray and Cherokee Floridite Gray bricks with metal gray paneling, as well as charcoal and some light yellows and a little bit of an earth-red charcoal there. These are the earth tones that they have proposed, which do meet the color requirements for the site. This is a perspective that was provided by the... This is a perspective that was provided by the applicant. I highlighted very tightly down in the corner whereabouts this is from. So what you're looking at is you're standing towards May River Road, looking into the site, so Parker's would be on your left-hand side if you're standing in this area. And then on this one, you're standing kind of in the parking area, looking towards May River Road. May River Road would be behind this tree line, kind of where these bigger trees are along the back here. So this is the front elevation, the left side of the lot, so Parker's would be off the screen here. This is the landscape plan that was provided, so you can see the existing pond is here. This is that pavilion down here, as well as the retail tenant space and the brewery, so the front of the building is here, which is the, and May River Road runs along the bottom of the screen. There is the, this is the paving plan that was provided, as well as the, let's see, we've got all of them in here, the utility plans, you can see some of the site lighting for the trees and things in here. This is the planting plan, which has zoomed in a portion of the Beer Garden area. Sister, guys, the word is sister, what I was looking for. Here's the plant schedule on the right-hand side here, as well as the canopy coverage which is proposed for the site. You can see that a majority of the parking area and the Beer Garden area is covered in canopy with the building footprint here, and the pavilion is that small white space at the bottom of the screen there. The landscape details, these were all details, some of them were on different pages. I did cut and paste so that I could make more of them fit here because most of them are things that you have seen before. And then this is, there's a trellis that is proposed on the site plan. It is proposed over in this area here, and I can find it on the site plan in a moment a little later for you, but it is this right here. So there's the pavilion, the main building, Beer Garden area, and then that's the little trellis detail that you're seeing here. This is the lighting plan.
Lighten.
Lighten. Sorry, it was big enough so you could see it, but it's small enough that I covered the words, I apologize. And then this is a conceptual decibel plan that was provided along with this set of plans, so I included it on. The review criteria for this, this area is located in the neighborhood Corezoning District, so it does run off of our Unified Development Ordinance, which means the criteria in Article Five Design Standards are the applicable architectural standards, which the plan is to be in compliance. There is, they will need to be in compliance with the development plan for the site. The Old Town Master Plan, while it is not located in Old Town, the Old Town Master Plan does identify this as the entrance corridor to Old Town, and so it speaks to needing to have high sort of architectural for this. Town staff, it is in compliance with the Old Town Master Plan as the gateway to the historic district. And then the deeds, the declaration of government covenants, conditions, and restrictions for the site, because this is located in the right commercial subdivision, we just need something that says that they are the declarant. I did receive an email from, I think, Keever James yesterday that had a copy of the covenants showing that the owner is the declarant for this site, but I did not have it at the time that this document was written, so that is something that has been taken care of, but does exist. As this is a certificate of appropriateness, the Planning Commission has the authority to approve approved with conditions, which are the applications given by the applicant, when they take into consideration the criteria which are found in Section 317, three of our Unified Development Ordinance. Town staff has identified some areas that need to be addressed to be in compliance with those sections, and they are identified in your document court and on the slides here. I am happy to go through them. Dan Keever is the applicant on the project, but James and Dan are both here, it looks like, yes, you disappeared on me to speak on behalf of the project, and I have the answer. Any questions, Dan?
Thank you. James, or do you like, or whoever, the applicant, Dan, one of the two of you? Both of you? Would you like to speak to the?
Sure, there'll be questions for both of us. We also have Mike Norr, who's with River Dog, if there are any operation or business-related things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Keever, Whitaker James, Keever, James Atkins, Court Atkins. We were going to go through the list of comments, and probably it makes sense to do architecture first, because there's some background with that.
Yeah.
Go away, if they want one. Obviously, a really important project for all of us, since we want to get this thing right. I thought, James Atkins, Court Atkins Group, as a pair, they're still in. The, just thought I'd give a little history on the project for you all to have some context. We went through this process several years ago, got Highway Court overlay district approval in 2008, some industry things put the project on hold for a little while. The town reached out to us early 2020, said that our application was expiring, would you like to extend it? They were kind enough to grant it for a year, but we were in this COVID, and probably not the best time to build a multimillion-dollar brewery. And so when we were ready to kick this off again, we met with the town staff to kind of go through the project and what has changed and what is new. We took this as an opportunity, I think, and I brought images of what was previously approved to greatly enhance the architecture of the building and really add some additional detail and level of character to this project. Also, it's an important project where it's located, what's around it, so I did bring a whole bunch of photos for site context, because I'm sure you all have been by the site, seen things, seen the neighbors, seen what's across the street, probably filled it with Parker's, but to have them in front of you for images, and I mentioned, Kevin said bring ten copies, so I can provide those if there's references to any context around here. But with that, happy to go through some of the architectural items that I brought up. Specifically, what's the best way to do this?
If you use the up and down arrows.
I have some architecture. Let's go here.
The ones that are listed, overall elevations have the full, like, two elevations on one screen, if you want to go up two more slides about, go.
So unique site, big property, big building. Thought it was appropriate to site this building a little farther off the main road, just to give us a lot of depth and pull the Beer Garden and pierced-brick fence you saw in the perspective, and some architectural element up to near the street to address the corridor, but keep it simple and delicate, which is where the pavilion came from. In the comments, there is a reference to signage. This is not the sign, it is simply a brick inset to which the allowable size sign was set into. It's the fact that the town staff reported that it had to be reduced to forty square feet, but then you wouldn't see it, so then you wouldn't do it. But it was meant to just provide, it's still all brick, it's just a.
A placeholder?
Like, a change in material to which the sign would be placed within the frame, not unlike the May River Crossing we just saw, which had a panel in the hills, such as the pylasters to which the sign would go. So just wanted to.
So even the, it'll always be that size, but the sign itself might be smaller?
Sign will definitely be smaller.
But, but the inlay, the change of material will stay exactly like that?
Yeah, and again, if it's an issue, we can remove the brick inlay, and we just thought it would be nice to break out the elevation, and we can just have the lights shining on the brick wall, but that's what that is, so it's not the sign, it's a brick detail. Let me get my sheet sheet of, because my memory is not what it used to be.
The second one was about the pavilion.
On architecture.
Sorry. This is going to get everyone ahead, so I'm sorry. I'll write them down. All right, we had the placement of the pavilion, which I'll spend a lot of time on. I'm sure you guys changed names, it's certainly granted without review from the town. We know any changes, we're going to have to go around. I'll spend some time talking about the roofs, so I'll get back to elevations on that. The metal siding, let's talk about that real quick.
So we're going to come back to the pavilion discussion?
We'll come back to the pavilion and the roofs, I think those are important architectural items to discuss.
Madam Chair, isn't this something that we usually see, the responses to all of these? I've nev, I don't remember seeing like twenty conditions.
No, we, I mean, that was just if the applicant provides responses, it's helpful, but they, it wasn't a requirement.
Because, Madam Chairman, because this is a certificate of appropriateness, the way our process lies is that the development plan goes to Development Review Committee prior to coming before you, which is how that response to comments is typically provided. With an application for a certificate of appropriateness, the application package is submitted and then brought straight before the Planning Commission, so it is something that, the application review materials are due four weeks in advance of the meeting, and that is what we go on to get before here, so there is typically not a response to comments for a certificate of appropriateness. Town staff is looking at some of the processes to try and potentially add that DRC or some preliminary step in there so that we can reduce some of these items, but that is a discussion for a process table in a later day, so no, there is not typically a response to comments for a certificate of appropriateness.
Thank you.
Let's talk about metal panel real quick. It is, I found my notes, I don't have to go back and forth now, so I will.
So we're going to?
I'll get to the elevations. It is in once.
What are we talking about right now?
Metal panel, because I think some of these are technical and the other ones are big-picture stuff. We have metal panel, which is on the kind of back end of the production. The 2018 COFA that was approved for this project acknowledged also that metal panel was not an approved material. At that time, the Planning Commission approved the metal panel in those limited editions on the back.
But was it with?
I'm going to plug you right there. What we approved then is not necessarily what we're going to approve now.
Okay. We have different numbers.
May I, I'll sneak up on the pictures? Because I want to show.
But back then, didn't we say it had to be a board and batt?
Which is what was.
And not the, I guess, whatever you submitted was corrugated or something?
Thank you.
All right, let's go through to their number.
Do you have a first round?
Yeah.
Do you have a carry?
Yeah. We can swing it from.
Madam Chair, yes, for the record, obviously, anything that is provided to the Commission at a hearing is incorporated into the documents that are going to be available online, so that the public will also get an opportunity to see exactly what you've seen.
Yes, and we can't make our ruling based on anything that had been necessarily provided because it wasn't in the review from staff.
Hundred percent. I just, I wanted, talking to staff, I thought there was two or nine.
I just make sure for the record.
So in the 2018 areas of building where metal panel are proposed or exterior, were approved as submitted as to purely the board and batting siding. This is a, there's a similar building that's beautifully, everyone knows the distillery product, beautifully designed, and our proposal is to use a similar metal building in the same capacity at the production. So if you look at page, picture fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, brick building, metal panel on the backside in the production areas, and then transitions to those things, so we're proposing the same board and battened type detailing that was recently approved by Planning Commission on this project in the back. For your consideration, so I just wanted to show that there's some precedent, recent precedent of that. The, we'll talk about the pavilion. The unarticulated facade, I believe, it's referenced to the service side here, which is all service yard and some mechanical equipment. Again, I would reference picture sixteen and fifteen in this packet as a similar type service-oriented facade that we are proposing here. I mentioned we could look at doing some bracketed awnings over the overhead doors, which would help.
Yeah, I would just, I would say the difference is, is your building isn't it much longer?
It's about fifty feet longer.
So I think that something's going to need to happen to help break that up.
Sure, and we can, we can discuss that and get your all's feedback. Again, I offer up getting some bracketed awning roofs over the overhead doors. Obviously, the service yard is going to provide a lot of depth to this thing. And then there was, silos was the correct term, by the way, they are grain silos. I think it's a great homage to the agrarian history of Bluffton and the farms here, and really has a kind of rural old feel to it. There are around, there's some, not quite as large, but there are some on the facility that we were just mentioning on the left side, which would be picture nineteen. So they are active grain silos, they are actually part of the production facility.
And those are sized according to the production?
That's correct, so they keep pops and grains, and so it's just ordering small bags for large productions, doesn't make financial sense. They bring a big semi-trailer in, they're designed so they can pull off, and they're filmed with a big hose and.
So those will always be production? It's not like they think they're going to use them for production and later change them to be decorative?
No, no, these are, these are part of the grain silos for the production of, they use a lot of water and they use a lot of grain, this is the tube, and then they take all this spent grain, donate it to farmers, and they use it for fertilizer and everything. So it's somewhat of, and they partner with a lot of local farms and stuff to take their spend.
And they fluidize this grain from the trucks to the grain, to the milk, to the, to the tanks?
I'm sorry?
They blow it?
It's a big hose, and then it goes through a chamber, like a chain tube, and then it comes in into an explosion-proof room.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was getting to, because if it's fluidized, the explosion-proof room.
Yes, explosion-proof room right on the other side of those silos, grinds it there, sends it to the hot liquor tanks. You can see a similar type process, it's on the barrel, you can see it back in there, but, and then comes out of the hot liquor tanks, the spent grains, and then it goes to the back where they get picked up. All the internal tanks are the fermenters, and so that's where all the liquid is, these things right here. So silos are here, explosion-proof rooms here, brew house is here, comes out of the brew house into the fermenting tanks, they stay in there for, I don't know, two to sometimes a month, and then they get canned or kegged, and then they come into the cold storage here. So we've kind of specifically oriented the, the production side of things further away from the residential side, this is really storage. And I think those were the architectural comments, so let's get to the, the big picture ones. Let's talk about.
And just for the record for the public that might be watching, the documents that James provided are pictures of the surrounding site conditions and also examples of the burnt church distillery as far as materials are concerned.
Thank you. There are also some pictures in here related to the neighboring properties, the corridor, so when we get into the pavilion conversation. I have one other exhibit, if I may pass out, because I think it'll provide a little context, and hopefully you agree. This is what was approved by Planning Commission for every corridor, it's part of public record, but I thought just from architecture and site context, it would be important to see whether it was appropriate a few years ago and hopefully deemed even more appropriate today.
James, for the record, is showing us what was from the 2017, eighteen approval, so those should be recorded somewhere in the towns.
Madam Chair, those should be available online under the Agenda Center on the Town Parkings website, or on the Unico, where the, all those old documents are. If I recall correctly, this was an approval with conditions.
Yes.
And really not meant to provide any back and forth, but to just give you the, I hope you all would agree that the architecture is, you know, even more improved. But, so talk about the pavilion. It came up in the last meeting, it is an open-air pavilion. The reason it ended up where it was is in early conversations and working with the town, we felt like having some architecture up on the street would be important since we've set the building back due to its scale. And so we've integrated this open-air pavilion with the pierced-brick wall, kind of grows out of that as kind of the front porch to the development. Most of the time, it's going to be a covered pavilion for eating and drinking. There was a question, which we'll just talk about, that if. Um, I, there was a question, which we'll just talk about, that if a band decides to play, what protections do we have to look at? And I think they're very valid and worthy questions. So we've spent quite a bit of time looking at this. The, uh, cause we certainly, A, uh, since then we have a noise ordinance, so the hundred percent is gonna fall into part of the noise ordinance. B, there's a few things that we can do for noise. The best thing is this. It is a kind of exponential decrease as you get farther and farther away. So the good news is that, uh, we're 400 feet away from primary residence and, and the nice lady spoke at the last meeting, and so we went out and measured everything. In the package of photos, there is some site context there. It's actually worked out pretty well. Um, and then we did a conceptual diagram. So, uh, I plugged in a 90 to 100 decibel event. Now, that is really loud. There will likely never be a, uh, over 100 decibels is painful to the average human ear. We're talking about lawn mowers, jackhammers, um, really loud things. I think an NFL stadium is like 110 usually, so, um, but I plugged it in there, uh, to see what the dispersion rates would be.
Flip so that people can see?
I should do that. I'm looking at it on here, but that doesn't do you any good.
Just for the public to know what we're talking about. There you go.
There we go.
Before you go further, the buildings that you identified, are those neighbors, the blocked gray houses?
Uh, so this is the neighbor's home. For context, this is the neighbor's garage and the metal building and the workshop. It doesn't show up on the GIS, but there's actually a garage building and a shed right here, and this is that new, um, office, uh, office building, uh, that sits here on the corridor. Uh, so we went out there.
What about the one on the other side?
Uh, that's Parker's.
Oh, that's Parker's. Okay, thank you.
And so, uh, obviously, we talked about, you know, sound kinds of, so in the best-case scenario with no obstructions between this void and the event, which is likely like a 100 decibel event, uh, which again, I want to prefix is a loud, like, this is gonna be like a singer-songwriter, this is not a rock concert, but that would be a rock concert. And when you get to the neighbor's back area here where they live, it's down to a normal conversation. Uh, it's louder than I'm speaking, or quieter than I'm speaking now, talking casually three feet away. That would be if there's no obstructions between them and that. We do have, and we've tried to outline it here, we have a service yard brick fence here. Based upon the feedback we got, we added a privacy fence here, which is very reflective of the privacy fence that sits, um, that was built with this office building between here. We've amped up the buffer, and we also have, um, in state context, photos. Probably best to look at, uh, picture two. I just wanted, for context, it's not the, it's not the home. Um, it is, uh, it's a garage, and it doesn't diminish the back of the building, but there's another structure in between them. And so we've got a lot of good things working for us. The other great thing you can do with sound, which is why they put big concrete barriers up along highways, uh, is mass. And so with the, the porch structure sitting out here directly in front of it as a brick structure, the texture of the brick, the, um, undulation of the ins and outs of the porch structure, all contribute to, uh, kind of, uh, dispersion of the sound. It absorbs, um, the majority of the loud component of, of what would be projected out here. So with, when we looked at it and it felt like the noise, um, was, was minimal effect to the neighbors, um, when, sorry, we just talked, that, then we look back at the architecture, and we felt like having a structure, uh, up on the street, um, was important just to give it some context and some scale to the larger structure behind it. And while the, um, the front door is up here in the elbow, you know, we really tried to detail this, um, the front of the building facing the corridor as open porches, and, um, we put all the kind of outdoor porch structures there and make it a little more lighter than it is. So this building kind of grows as it goes back. Yes, sir.
First of all, I'm, I'm excited to see this, but if you go back to your sound doc, document for just a second.
Sure.
I think you've done a great job, you know, showing what the attenuation is by.
I already did.
I'm just kidding.
Architects, I tell ya.
I thought you'd done a great job showing how it's gonna attenuate over the distance. Number one, I, I went to the CDC noise guidelines, and they suggest, um, you know, loud entertainment venues such as nightclubs, bars, and concerts is 100, 500, 10. There's nothing in here that says it's only 90. In fact, you know, a, a lawn mower's, you know, about 90. So I, I'd love to know where the 90 came from compared to what I'm seeing on the CDC, number one. And number two, are you expecting any attenuation from the trees that are planted around? Are they gonna be mature trees or are they all new plantings?
There, there's a significant buffer already, and again, you can see that in some context on the early photos two and three. That's all being, cause they're planting new ones, uh, and then there's existing trees along the whole, um, canal, and, um, so those all are gonna remain. A rock band, like, we're, we're not doing a, a rock band concert here. Again, there's a big difference between going to an arena and a rock band and a two or three person.
No, I understand that.
When you say that, and two days ago, I was at the distillery watching a rock band play. And you can't say that there won't be.
And I need to clarify, the CDC doesn't just say rock band, it says nightclubs and bars, um, as, as far as music is concerned. So I just, I would, you know, I don't, I think you're still gonna be okay if you use the numbers that the CDC use because you're way into the white here as far as that resonance is concerned.
I use 100, just for the, the, this version, if you want to, I use 100 or.
So Mr. Delcor.
Yes, sir.
If you look on the bottom left, what's the first word you see?
Concept.
Concept.
Who, who, who created this? I created it.
Okay.
As a professional.
And what expertise do you have on decibel levels and like, and distance and so on?
Well, it's, it's math.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to be confrontational.
No, I understand. I'm in architecture, we study structures, mechanical, acoustics, um, architecture design, architectural history, architectural present, cover the whole gamut. And so I went back to my studies, I pulled the formulas, pulled the sound diagrams. Now, I use this as if there was no obstructions between the pavilion and the neighbors. We know that there are, so this would be worst-case scenario, clear field between pavilion and neighbor.
Okay, but, but let me pause you. Okay, so history of Bluffton, we have the dispensary. We've had issues with the live music at the dispensary, even when it's not facing directly towards houses. We have the distillery, which we can tell how the music's going around it. We have all these different examples, you can go to different towns. Town my mother-in-law lives in, eight blocks away, you can hear the music. What is, just, just, I'm just curious, what is the opposition to taking this pavilion that you're only gonna see the back of from 46 anyways, and rotating it 90 degrees so that it's facing away from these poor people's houses and towards parkers, not towards houses? And actually gives us visibility from people driving up and down 46 so that now they see a band playing and they're like, well, why don't we go in there?
I, I would see it differently in the sense that turning it 90 degrees completely avoids any address to the highway corridor. In fact, one of the town comments was, we should address the corridor in some way. You turn it, now it has no relevance to the street front.
I, I disagree. You have the back of the pavilion addressing the road. That's not addressing the road now.
I, I don't.
You rotate it and you're, you're giving a visibility and you're addressing the road.
When a front porch slopes from a house up to the road, it goes high to low. This does the same thing.
I'm, I'm gonna tell you, and I mean, we'll wait and see how the rest of the commission feels, I'm gonna tell you, I have a preponderance of caution for the residential neighbors in that area. And I know what you're saying, but I've seen in practical application what happens.
And we sure have one.
No, you're saying the level of normal conversation in that person's backyard, well, would you like to hear people talking in your backyard all the time? That's normal conversation. There, there, there are concerns, I, don't get me wrong, I love, where are you? I love this project. I will be one of your best customers in here. My wife and I will be sitting at that pavilion, we will be on the front porch, but we also have to consider other people in the neighborhood and how everything addresses each other.
But I think it's why putting a large massive building right in front of this structure is more important than, what about the people? You put nothing between this, and you can see how far this noise, the, the, that all is rest, that is the carry of the primary noise. That's going across the street to the lady, um, that runs her little store there. That's even louder than what the noise would be.
The nature, the nature lady?
Yeah, would, would be over here. And then there's, uh, I don't know better what happened, but there's multi-family project planned right there. And so I think all things considered, putting the large massive building in direct parallel to the pavilion, which has a lot of undulation weight to absorb and diffuse the sound before the main thrust of the noise goes anywhere else, and then layering on brick walls, these, and then privacy, and then existing trees, and then it, the fact that it, um, you know, there, there are metal buildings and garages which turn away to this, all contribute to, I'm not sure you're gonna hear anything, but I can't guarantee that. But I also can't guarantee that the band is gonna set up in the pavilion. What if they set up in the lawn next to them? I mean, there's no, so I think in order to control this thing, this is probably the ideal situation, and we've layered on additional privacy and, uh, and plantings and buffers from a visual perspective from their side. And there's not gonna be a band playing in there 24/7.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit on Charlie's point here, but you've done a, a, a sound analysis, and the attenuation of the high frequencies, you're absolutely right. The low frequencies don't go straight out. You know as well as I do, cause I've studied sounds, I'm an engineer too, they're all over the place, and that's what people hear, they hear the bass. So, so it would be great to see, are you attenuating that on the same kind of level that you are with the, the, the high ones?
And the, the bass, the best thing is mass. That's, that's how you, and, and so the proximity to this building, the very fact that we've got not metal picket fences, we've got brick service walls, we've got brick, um, containing the whole garden.
Okay.
Basically surrounds this thing with a, um, you know, you can see it in the perspective here, um, you know, a, a great brick wall. So those sounds, again, there's always gonna be stuff bounce around, but there is so much
Mass.
Mass and structure, and, and it's not, it's not like, you know, something right in front of it, it's, it's all around. Plus, we've got arbors and new trees and, uh, and then existing trees. And so, um, I, I really do, and, and I wouldn't stand up in front of you, but I didn't believe this, this is really the best solution. And I also believe that architecturally, having something close to the street like a porch, there's no front or back to the pavilion. Yes, the fence runs behind it. But, um, you know, to your comment, rotating pavilion and those little frequencies, they're, they're going around. So if we rotated it 90 degrees and put it here and put it there, it's actually getting closer to the neighbors. And I, and I gave you some context for this when we redesigned this, that I think is important. And you can see in the first page of the previously approved plan, we've actually pulled the event space, which is that bottom right square and all the events up, and pulled it further away from the neighbors. Since building that farther away from the neighbors, we put the event space up on Jennifer Court, on the second floor in the front, away from it. So there's a lot of things that we've done, I think, in the redesign to address the concerns. And again, at the end of the day, we're, they're all gonna follow the new, new ways. And this is not, correct me if I'm wrong, they're not gonna have live music out there 24/7.
And before we keep going down this path, um, because I didn't ask earlier, do we have a public comment on this?
We do.
Okay, so I think let's, before we continue, cause it might, some of your questions or things you've just said, it might help with that public comment as well.
Sure, and then we can come back to the.
Take a pause and let public comment.
The rich, slow conversation, I think.
Charles Moore.
Good evening. My name is Charles Moore. I live on, at 15 Red Cedar Street, and I'm the property we're talking about.
Jason, can we put that map up there?
Can we go back to the sound map that was up there?
And Carrie, can we give him a little more than three minutes only because he's been waiting so patiently?
Okay. I see that there's, I, this is a pointer right here.
Top button?
Top button. Okay, right here, that wall, is that a wall?
That's a fence.
Do we have any information on that, the size of that? Cause that's new from what we had before.
Six foot, loud wall, wood wall, wood fence.
Is that written in our packet somewhere?
It's in there, yeah.
Six foot, good. I would like to see it higher. I think that would go a long way for the abatement of the noise.
But do we have any restrictions from the town on height?
No, not, this is not an, this.
It requires a building permit if it exceeds six feet, but that's.
Okay.
That's part of this.
Yeah.
Our whole concern is the noise level. My wife works at night, and she's sleeping during the day, and if there's an event up there, you know, it's gonna keep her awake. The venue that's up by Dollar General, when they have a wedding up there, it's like the bands in the yard, we can hear it that loud. So that, that's a good, two, couple of blocks away from our house, so that'll let you know how much the noise moves. Also, what we hear is the low frequencies, like you said. So that's all I have to add to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. James, do you wanna come back and maybe address some of those concerns?
Absolutely. We've considered the height of the fence, I mean, we put in a six-foot fence, cause that's what is, um, right here on this property that was approved, but there's nothing wrong with looking at an eight-foot solid privacy fence. And again, uh, from a, you can imagine that it's likely a, a Friday evening or a Saturday evening type, you know.
I, I live on 65 Fourth Avenue, so I drive by this every day. I also play music. From my house, I can hear Sunset Festival parties. I can sing along with the music that's over at the Oyster Factory. So, direction matters, cause that is directed towards my house. And I have a whole lot of trees and a whole lot of structures between that and my house. I can hear somebody playing on Fifth, I can hear downtown Deli or the venue 1223. So, like, eh, some live music, I, I love live music. I mean, if I hear a marching band, if I hear live music, it's a great joy. Do I wanna hear it regularly all the time and not have any control of turning that up and down? No. And I am particularly concerned about the orientation of this. I'm also particularly concerned that wood fence will do a little bit, but like you said, it is a mass issue. The trees will not do much of anything. I also had the pleasure of working on the buffer on the Hilton Head Airport, and so I did look extensively into sound as a part of that because it was a very contentious issue. Again, directional, where that noise is coming out of, which is why an eight-foot fence helps, because sometimes they prop those speakers up higher and that's gonna go right over that fence, um, particularly if there's any, if that's sitting higher than the rest of, you know, that puts that sound higher than, like, if this pavilion is raised in any way, shape or form, it can put that sound over top of that fence and then not deal with hillbillies a good. And I would, and my house is kind of like between all of the buildings, so the fence is my best shot at having any kind of screening from that sound. So from my standpoint, directionally, where that sound is going, and yes, I understand those little nooks and crannies in the foot, face, facade of that building do disperse the sound, but it's not a, um, it's not a full blockade. And while I don't, I am sensitive to the nature store, she's there during the day, she's not there at eight o'clock at night, you know? I, I have fa, or people that are around me that have kids that are trying to sleep, they're annoyed by my dog barking more than 10 times in a row. So I know how sensitive the neighbors are to sound, and it makes me, I, it would, it was just, it would, it make, it, I don't, I don't feel comfortable that the direction that this is showing is doing what it, the job sufficiently enough as you portray. I understand that this is a, this is a brewery, a huge brewery. If you're gonna tell me, they may have music, but we, you like, that's a programming thing that the design is not in control of, and I'm just.
They're gonna have music, and, and, and we can't soundproof an outdoor venue. I mean, but we can do things to help mitigate it. So if we've got a wood fence here, I agree, the wood is not, this is all brick fence here, that also helps, um, just from a directional travel. I would just ask the question, if there was no pavilion and a lawn there, would we be having the same conversation? The band would set up in the same spot? At least with the pavilion, we can help control and direct. But, and again, our thought is that the pavilion, and I wanted to provide context because this is where the pavilion was, and I'm not saying that it should be approved. I just want to give context. It's where the pavilion was approved last time for the very fact to address the corridor. And same parameters, same everything. Now, and I'm not giving, I appreciate your comment. I'm not asking for approval because of that. I'm just saying for context, we did have these conversations before. And the pavilion there helps control and direct. We added some wood louvers on the sides to again, just help diffuse the sound, not going to stop the sound, to do whatever we could. We've got some arbers and, you know, right of stuff. But the sound, it's part of living in an urban environment. We have cars, we have sounds. Talking to River Dog, they understand that they're in the neighborhood. They want to be good neighbors. They have no, they're not running live bands till midnight against the sound ordinances. I would promise you, Ms. Gray would please show up because of sound ordinances. She's going to be unhappy. So with all the protections the towns pass for sound ordinances, making our best guess and to mitigate as best we can, also to address architecture and the street, we feel like this is a great solution.
I also disagree that the architecture addresses the street. You've got a brick, basically you got, you do have the slanted shed roof that leads to a brick wall that basically ends where that, you know, starts where that stops. I don't think architect, you just look at the, you're looking at a roof. You don't actually see any of the architectural elements of that pavilion. So from the street, it doesn't look like much of anything. So I don't see it as architecturally addressing the street. And I actually think the side profile has a lot more character to it and interest than that side that is now currently facing.
And I think like somebody mentioned before, it would bring people more into it because they'd see what it is. But I do think the side elevation would be a nice feature.
I would even offer up, I mean, we're here in front of you. I've shared my professional opinion, what I think the right design solution is. And I respect your all's comments as well. I would like to turn it to the building because at the end of the day, I would just assume eliminate the pavilion. And because it's really, it's such a small element to the overall concept and the beer garden. I really think that whether it comes or goes, I thought, I think that it was serving a good purpose. And if you all disagree, I would just assume it.
You don't think it can serve a good purpose by rotating it though? I mean, if.
We have created these natural, so if you've ever been to Stone Brewery in San Diego, her office was right next to that. And it is much more garden, natural park-like setting with pockets of seating areas, which is what Dan and his team has designed. That's really what this is about. It's not about the music. It's about creating these little family rooms out in the beer garden for people to enjoy with friends and family. They understand that music will likely happen. It is not the main component. This is not, the goal is not to make a music venue. The goal is to create a world-class beer garden that is different than anything that is around here, which is this very natural, we're going to be planting significant oak trees in it, these little pockets, a little fire pit. And you can see it in the design. That's, that's the goal of that space. So we feel like the pavilion isn't serving what we thought it was doing. I would just assume it not be part of it because it's not an important component to the goal of the beer garden.
Would you still have music on the grass area in the same kind of way, have a band there?
Yeah, but it wouldn't project the music the same way if it doesn't have a building around it.
And if I may, Madam Chair, so just a few small comments about some of the noise issues that were brought up. So obviously, London does have a noise ordinance, y'all familiar with that? For those watching at home, it's Title 12 under our MUNI code. And it require, and it's a violation of the noise ordinance to have decibels of over, I think, 50 decibels of 250 feet from the noise source. So obviously that's, you know, they're, I'm a sound engineer, I'm not an architect. We don't study that in law school at all. So my understanding of this very building, I'm looking at that drawing, obviously there would be some concerns there. But as far as amplified music, this is not an historic district, so amplified music is permitted, is my recollection. And also amplified music can be had without the pavilion or with it. And as Commissioner Wetmore was getting ready to point out, I believe, it's more about orientation and additional amplification, I guess, by being on a raised structure. So again, just wanted to address some of those comments. Obviously, the conceptual dispersion diagram that's been provided is for y'all's consideration. But I just wanted to comment on that noise ordinance. If you have any questions, bring them in.
Thank you.
One other big architectural thing we can get, and then I can let Dan do this thing. And I'm probably tired of hearing you talk. There was a question about the roof slope. There's a few, let's just put the pavilion on the side. It was a 312 roof. Before, when it was approved, it was a 312 roof. Now, I think a 312 is an appropriate porch structure, but again, we're not going to hash that out again. There are two other locations. There is this saddle between the two gables, which is like a 3.2 and 12. The reason why it's there is to have it hit under the parapet wall. You really, the goal is to amplify the two gables ends.
How to come up with 3.2?
It's where it falls, right below the frustration of the parapet wall. There was a mechanical elevator shaft, sorry, there are three spots. There's a mechanical elevator shaft back here. Didn't really feel like putting another roof on top of it at a 412 to make this thing even taller and more amplified made a lot of sense. So we kept it near the flat and sloped to the back. And then the big one is this elevation. So in the previous package that you have, you will see that it is a 412 roof slope, which is what we did. We intentionally, when we redesigned this, brought it to 312. Just from a scale perspective to the newly designed kind of restaurant bar building. And the, there's, those fermenters are tall. So we've got kind of a 20-foot, I think another five, six feet to the structure just seemed, the fact that it's on the backside, it's in the back corner. We're just trying to bring this, the scale of this building here down to not compete as much with all this great architecture happening here. So we intentionally made it a 312 instead of a 412. If you all feel like the package that you have, a 412 seems more appropriate. We're happy to change it back. We were just trying to not make it any taller than it needed. To be honest, they would like a 112 because they don't need the volume in the middle. But 312 seemed like a good, good balance. But, so those are the, again, the saddle in the front coming up between, oh, dang on it.
You got it. In the front.
There we go. Is this one, and we could drop the porch bearing and make this porch more squat. But I think the vertical nature, just taking our cues from going through the HPC several times, the vertical nature is much better than horizontal. This little flat roof section here where the elevator ends, stair to the access to the roof, probably best to be seen, this elevation. So it's tucked away in the back.
Oh boy.
I keep wanting to hit the center one.
Do you have a roof plan in this package?
Yes.
Where at both pages?
There you go. It's up on the screen.
Can you point out those?
So this one, is this little saddle in here? It's 3.19. Just with the configuration here, we don't want to make it any taller than it needs to be. We've got a elevator shaft, little guy here. And we've got the stair tower back here and elevator. And then we have this whole thing that's sitting at 312.
How close is that to that side?
East side awnings too.
Yeah.
Say again?
The awnings over the doors on the east side elevation and the pavilion is a 312 as well. So.
The only reason why I was trying to figure that out is there, on the western side facade of the, not the, well, the brick, that's a parapet wall.
Correct.
So just because of precedents that have been set from other buildings and specifically ones that you have mentioned in other, the distillery as other examples of things. I know that in this building, the roof pitches had to be adjusted. And that was to either do that to disguise the parapet wall or we had to change the roof pitch to four, but I think that it had to be, wasn't there parapet? Like you have to disguise it with a parapet.
A flat roof would require a parapet.
Yes.
On.
All.
On all sides.
Right.
A sloped roof. You're testing my memory on the exact roof pitch slope of things that.
I'm just saying, I do, I just remember having this discussion before and I just don't want to set this a precedent, saying that like we did on yours, but we can't do it on yours.
I would reference sheet four, or picture 14 in the package here, where I assume there was some consideration for the parapet wall to stop and then goes to probably half and 12 roof slope for the remaining portion that's not parapeted. I don't, I couldn't tell. It's a 3 or a 412 on the barrel storage. And again, I could use this package so you can see what it looks like as a 412. I'm a hundred percent happy to make it a 412. There is no.
I just remember there was a conflict with that very same thing. And I want to make sure we're doing the same.
Madam Chair, again, this is based on partially on my recollection and partially off looking at the video right now. But obviously it's 514, 3, the 1, 2, sub, some section two, as y'all all know about. Flat roofs, including a minimum pitch less than a 412 without a abatement, is sets. But I do, my recollection is the same as yours, that it was required, that's been around the entirety of the flat roof.
Yeah. So I think what you are seeing is all the brick around that, there's a roof behind that, not, not the metal part of the building that you're.
Yes, I see the parapet and then it stops and then it's like a, the half and full is visible. But again, I don't want to make a big deal.
No, I just wanted to make sure that it's not, you know, we let this person do it, but we didn't let that person do it.
Hundred percent.
We all need to be consistent across the board.
So for reference, you can see in the pack that I provided, that's a previously approved, that's a 412 slope. There is actually no objection to make that a 412 roof slope on the production building. I would consider for the cricket front porch, that's 3.19, that it's three, I think. Again, this is probably a workshop item. 312 is a very typical roof slope porch. It's prevalent throughout the little country. Not sure where the 412 magic came from, but for a shift front porch, a 312, you know, that even knows.
Yeah, we know, we just have to abide by.
Have to abide by. So again, the pavilion, again, we've already beat that one to death.
Could you do me a favor? Could you have that roof plan just one more time, just one more question?
Done before we know it.
Where's the dust control units? Because I used to, as an engineer, work on some dust control units in a plant. They run a lot and they're noisy. Do you have them on the roof and are they soundproofed so they're not a source of noise too?
For the production, there's no dust.
There's no dust control for taking the air out as they fluidize the granite hops in?
No, it's all, this is not alcohol content and the production process for a brewery is different than a distillery.
I was just referring to the explosion proof room that you were talking about.
Oh no, it just has to be one hour and the electrical outlet is not contained and dispersed. It is simply, the electrical boxes have to be explosion proofed and then it has to be contained.
Got you.
It's not.
There's not a dust hazard in that room?
There is not.
Okay, thank you.
But they want to make sure that when you flip the switch in the spark and.
Got you, thank you.
Don't want that. We went through it at Southern Hall, so.
So by doing, going back to that roof, by doing, if you are not going to change it and you had to do a parapet around, then that might help with the articulation of the northern facade too. That is that blank wall, you could incorporate something, but I mean, that's.
So, I mean, a parapet wall around here is.
I was saying, if you didn't change the pitch and indeed had that wall around like we were talking about, because you had said you would change it before, which is fine. But if you didn't, I was just saying that perhaps that you could show some articulation in that wall because of the, their parapet and just how you could undulate some brickwork in and out, but.
Yeah, I would reference, we might look at a single slope, picture 16 in the package, which is a rear of this production. So it is a single slope front to back with no parapet wall back there and some overhead doors. And again, I actually think, you know, I know this sounds crazy. Service yards and the equipment actually help, they become elements within here. But I think specific to that elevation, adding some, there, there, some overhead door, some awnings and pieces. You know, it's utilitarian, roller doors and deliveries and such. But happy to look at, you know, if we want to add some, some bump outs or projections along the wall, you know, that create a little bit of a, at the doors and some designation. Because I don't think you need much behind the service fences. I think they're going to break that up from a visual perspective. But I could see in, I'll do it with this, in this area, adding some architecture here and adding some architecture here to just break up the rhythm. No issues there at all. And happy to take it to a 412, add some fenestration there. Again, if it's absolute, has to be 412 on the saddle between the two gables, we'll play with the porches and make the parapet in the building taller in order to make it happen. Everything, every more slope that we have, the building's getting bigger. So if the goal is to get the building bigger to 412, we can do that. If it's meant to, there's some consideration for a deviation in order to keep the scale as minimal as possible, I would entertain that as well. I'm happy to head in whichever direction you'd like. Because really, this building's about the, this project is about this building and the beer garden. We spend a lot of time talking about doing, and it's an important topic. If we're just, the architecture doesn't make sense and you disagree with our solution, I would just assume that the pavilion disappeared. I think that's all. I didn't leave any time to Dan, but I know he had some comments and some architecture and.
Sorry, it's time for, I'll be really quick, really quick, break news. For the landscape. So under the conditions of the landscape, there's a 9 through 15. So starting with nine, that's to increase plant size. That's no problem. We'll update that and update your plant schedule. Number 10 is sort of the same thing. We'll update the size of plantings. That's no problem. 11, additional plantings on the north property line and on the east property line. We looked at it, we'll probably end up adding 25 to 30, well, on the eastern property line along that pond, we can probably add 20 to 30 wax hurdles. Top end?
It's just.
Pointing? Okay. So eastern property line, the backside of the pond, this, there's pretty thick vegetation here now, but we can add along this corridor right here. And then we can add another layer of planting, probably another 15 to 20. Probably yellow and ees here. Those will be more than ground level, four to eight foot tall layer of plantings. And then back here, we have live oats and some olive. So we add, again, add that, that extra level layer of planting. So we can, we can pretty easily address that comment. The number 12, the number in the buffers, so have. The note, number twelve, the note in the buffers, so have. So in the front, along Mary River Road, this buffer, and it was originally, the fifty foot buffer was measured from the road. I guess when this was approved, that was when the, before the highway was wide and the streetscape project went in. We had, there was, it was sort of unclear whether we had to follow the fifty, the old or new, but we ended up pushing everything back. So we're actually, this corner is fifty feet right away to the build, to the fence. And then building is sixty feet from the right away. So that, that buffer, if you bow there, it's, it's, there's not, it's mostly pine trees. So we're supplementing this buffer, and there, there was a little note there that said, slightly thin underbrush, we're just, we're going to take that head off. So we're, everything we're doing here is adding to that buffer.
Do you remember?
We're going to take that off.
Deadlands an invasive species, and add.
Correct, I mean, we may, we may leave an invasive species just to cover it there, but there's really not much need to do out there. The, the lighting, we don't have that board out, but that was another one. Other word?
Towards your landscape plan, keep going.
It's just not as easy as it looks, so.
Okay, so we had a, we looked back, we had a lighting plan from two thousand and eighteen. We, we had it updated with Dominion, so a bit back and forth with them as we go to the final. They, I think, in the process of updating the lights in the parking lot, we got a little too much light there. So, we'll work with Dominion to get that back to where it needs to go. And then, well, I just have to point a reference, the lights on Jennifer Court, they're the Shepherd's Crook light, the ones that run the streetscape. So they're, they're the really nice expensive lights, ready to make this a really nice streetscape. The lights in the parking lot are meant to be more concealed, they're, they're called shoebox, they're not like the old shoebox, they're really streamlined LED lights. So I think with that technology, some photometrics may have changed. So the street lights, we appear to be a little low. So same thing, we're going to work with Dominion on that, to get that to where it needs to be in town code. And then, I think the third point on lighting was the beer garden. Honestly, we typically don't provide photometrics for like, for landscape lighting, but we're working with a group right now to, to provide that for staff review of photometrics of the beer garden. It's mostly going to be, but pretty much all the low voltage landscape lighting, very, very subtle lighting.
Madam Chair, Mr. DeBra, just to interject quickly about condition number fourteen. That actually, staff has requested a determination on proposed elimination levels, rather than just, you know, a condition for review and approval. So I'm, I just wanted to make sure that the applicant had an opportunity to address, and that y'all had an opportunity to ask any questions or comment on that before, before y'all move on.
Thank you.
If I could add one more thing with that, is, you know, obviously, under number fifteen is, is bringing the lighting all the way to the property line. But, you know, especially on the, the back area, since that is immediately adjacent to that property. Some of the concerns we have is any wall pack lights that are coming off the building, which none are shown on the building. Typically, you know, you'd want those to be a full cutoff, but there's no information provided. I have seen where there is no full cutoff, and then that is just a, a bright stark light that is then shining into that adjacent property owners.
Thank you.
Herman, just to speak to fourteen just a little bit, the reason we're asking for a determination on the appropriateness of that is that there are some areas which the, the lighting is not meeting the, the maximum level or the median level, and it's, so it's below the levels that are there. Sometimes that is a deviation that is warranted, it doesn't need to be at the maximum that's there, but because it is below on all the median, I'm sorry, the minimum, average, and maximum, we just flag it as something that has deviated from that. So, for the walkways and streets, which that's primarily, I believe, the Jennifer Court corridor there, and a little bit of the sidewalk area in there. It is permitted to be ten, and it's proposed at three point six. The average is permitted is one point zero, and it's flagging at point eight, which that's very close to the average there. And then the minimum is point two, and it's flagging at zero, which zero at the lot line would not be inappropriate. It's likely that the sidewalk is approaching that. So the, the minimum and average are not something that are alarmingly low, but because at three point six where it's permitted to be ten, we just want your determination on.
What did you say the three point six was?
It's, if you go back to the lighting plan, it's the streets and walkways is the one that's flagged.
Yeah, this, maybe you can see on this plan here, so there's one, so these are Shepherd's Crook's lights. Apparently it was here before the streetscape was built, Mary River Road, when the streetscape went in, it got a lot brighter, because those lights were, when they went in, it was alarming, I think, to everybody.
So can you give us a comparison of like?
Yes.
Since that's three point whatever, and it's less than ten, what is, why is it that, and give us a comparison?
Here are the lights, you can see there's one, two, three, there's about seven of them all the way across here. And they're, they're roughly, I want to say thirty feet from center, thirty to forty foot from center, which is pretty close for a street light, this kind of street. And there's a lot, a lot of ambient light coming from the parkers, as you can imagine, their lighting is ten times what we have. So now that we're looking at it, we would, like, we probably don't really need to add any more street lights. If we added light to meet the requirements, it would probably be subtle landscape lights that maybe directed in certain areas that are, are not meeting requirements.
So I guess the number's lower because you're taking into consideration the neighboring property's lights that are shining, so these lights don't have to be as bright as.
Yeah, I think it's partially just photometrics, this style of light, it doesn't grow a whole lot of bright light, and that's part of.
But I guess maybe, why did y'all choose that light though? I mean, is in response to?
To maintain the aesthetic of the streetscape, Mary River Road.
Is that what Mary River Road is?
Are you still using the same fix, the same lamp as Mary River Road, or are you changing up the lamp?
It's a diff, I mean, it's different, it's changed since they've gone in, yes. But that's, I guess that was my, what I was saying, we're going to work with Dominion on that, see if we can get something brighter to meet the requirement without additional post, that's what we're, we're going to look at.
But you're looking at it as, as a comparison to Mary River Road? I'm just trying to think of a visual.
No, not necessarily, we're just, we're looking at it, one, to meet the, we don't meet the minimum requirement for light. So if we can quickly look at it, if we change out some bulbs, maybe to meet the minimum requirement, then we're, we're good to go. I would say, based on, Katie said, it would be nice to know that we had to go a little bit lower than that, knowing the spacing that we have, that would be, that would be appropriate for us. But I think we can still meet it either way.
So then why don't we just say you have to meet the minimum requirement? Can do it either way.
Do you think meeting the minimum would require more posts though?
We, we were going to try to not have more posts, we need to like not have more posts.
So your calculations do take into account the amount of light coming off of parkers, or they don't?
No, they don't.
I have, this is, parkers is real bright, again, I live nearby.
Yeah.
And Mary River Road is only the way Mary River Road is because S E D O T requires that, so that there's not a strobe light effect. I don't have a desire to repeat that.
Yeah, if we could have the ability to, to be lower and work with, with base, with staff, work with staff on that, that would be ideal.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Madam Chair, if I may, the, the type of lighting that has, that goes this way, it doesn't project as much outward light. So the shoebox style that you typically see in parking lots, they can increase those levels very easily and decrease those levels very easily. With the style of lighting, it's along Mary River Road, and they're continuing on here, it's very hard to update, because they are sharp, cut off, and flat, and just project straight down, just for further clarification.
I would assume they could measure the amount of foot candles that are projecting on a surface, so that you could take into account what is coming off of parkers.
Be good, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and that way you could justify, we are meeting those levels without having to change the lights.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's what I was saying, we're going to work with Dominion on, to see conditions, their bulbs, and then work with staff on if we had to add to it.
So I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out with our determination, how do we make a determination if there's all these different factors?
Well, I think what we're saying is, we can meet the minimum requirement, because once we do the things we just talked about.
So then in our condition, it would be to meet them all.
I think you're saying you don't need to make a determination, because they're saying they're going to meet that ordinance requirement.
Yeah, but, but I'm saying, on her staff report.
So it's part of the condition, it could be determines that the minimum must be met, however, the, the maximum level is appropriate.
I just want to make sure we're dressing it properly when we're responding.
Thank you.
Step in real quick, because these are.
I am having a little bit of a struggle with this idea of, you know, that, that beer garden, I can see a lot of yellow lights that are in that beer garden with no landscape lighting numbers, like the foot candles, the lumens, I don't have any information on that. So I am having a bit, because we're not, this isn't just, the road lighting is one thing, this is its own other entity and body that we don't have any information on to be making a determination on. And so I don't know if, we don't know if it's going to be over the max also with that number of fixtures. That's my only concern, because I don't know what the bulbs are, I don't know what, I don't have any information to know what's happening there.
Commissioner Duncan, I did separate those out as two separate items on the list, so that the additional information for the lighting in the beer garden is in compliance, because it does have a, a different standard than the streets and walkways, so they're broken out separately. So fifteen addresses the beer garden, and any additional areas that haven't been included currently, and fourteen is specifically the stuff that has been included thus far.
So is there, are you asking for a determination on the beer, okay, so that's a work with the applicant to make.
Fifteen is that it is, in, in order to meet the standards in three seventeen three, they would need to provide that additional information. So it's a, staff has put it as a condition, whether you choose to include it as your condition, that's one thing. But the fourteen is the only thing we were requesting the determination on, was that streets and walkways minimum.
Okay.
So it is separate.
Okay. Anything else?
To round out, because these are easy.
Yes, they are.
These are the easy ones, we'll provide an exempt plan.
Yes.
We'll certainly meet all the conditions, we'll apply for signage permits at a later date to meet the requirement. And we do have a, the property owner is, been, is the declaration, and produced, representatives produced a letter after reviewing the documents and descriptions that this project meets the requirements for the declaration, so we got that covered.
Okay, thank you.
Katie, I have a question.
After that presentation, any questions?
I do. Katie, I have a question about signage. It's forty square feet in total for the whole building, is that, or is, like cumulatively, are there different signs, is it, oh, maybe that was a Jordan question.
It's, it's per building.
It's per building?
Yeah, on per sign, now they, they're allowed to have monument signs here, and because they face two streets, they can technically have two monument signs as well.
Okay, but on the building, they would only, so where they have that front, along the front, they have that brick enhancement, that's, so that would be one sign opportunity. I swear, I saw in another elevation, like hanging signs that were also on several portions of the building, those would not be allowed, is that correct?
They would not be permitted. Well, actually, the other establishments, it, okay, so with, depending on how they configure this, as far as like the restaurants inside the building, they would also be, like, if it's a multi-tenant building, they're allowed to have additional signage. So if it's just River Dog Brewing, River Dog Brewing as that one entity is allowed to have one sign. Multi-tenant building, you're allowed to have additional signage for each tenant.
So there will be multi-tenants?
Per establishment.
Per establishment.
So, River Dog, River Dog has business license, they exist, hot dog companies, all the hot dog businesses have business licenses that have a signage, but it's, yes.
But all that would have to go through approval at the tenant anyway, so, okay.
Yes, the only reason that the signage was brought to your attention at this point is because it is part of an architectural element, and it is the, the rectangle. So the sign is measured, a wall sign is measured with a box around the letters, and the box that is made of bricks currently is at sixty-six square feet approximately, which is about twenty-six, yeah, square feet larger than what would be permitted in there. So we just wanted to prevent someone from coming in later and saying, you know, this is challenging, because it no longer will, the architecture will look silly if you put a sign that is forty in a sixty-six square foot box. So we wanted to draw that to your attention ahead of time, so that it was addressed during the.
Well, they're just going to make it look appropriate.
Or we can remove it if it bothers you.
I think it'd look like a framed picture, I think.
I'm just sizing it to the forty square feet, it's not the, having an enhancement, it's the size of it. And I, and I do understand why you're doing it, because it gives it more prominence, and I can appreciate that. But I feel like it's trying to push a limit of the rules, to, in order to kind of beef it up in a way that could follow, that could, it's just a bit of a blurry line, I feel like.
I think what will help is just the fact that, that they meet the sign requirements as stated in the U D O.
Yes, and how it looks is, if it looks terrible, it's on them.
Well, yes.
I'm curious, and this is a curiosity question, and maybe it'd be too late to be asking curiosity questions, but the, these big chimney features that are the tallest portion of this building, what is that, why is that? They look, even in the, in a, in perspective, look odd to me.
Okay.
Are they functional?
They are functional, they're real fireplaces.
And there's a height by code that you have to be?
Correct, I mean, there are exceptions for cupolas and accents and chimneys and fireplaces, but I, I think it looks fantastic, that's my opinion. And again, the whole.
I guess what I'm getting at is, why is it that tall, does it have to be that tall, and what's the minimum?
There's no magic other than aesthetics. If you read the context and the story that was written from the, the kind of vision of this project, it's kind of old boat warehouse, boat production facility that's been converted into the brewery, and has this kind of timeless warehouse feel. In that case, you would have old smokestacks, and you would have things that would be larger in scale than the buildings that they're attached to. Kind of like we have the, kind of, the outriggers here and things like that. So they were accentuated even taller to emulate kind of the old smokestacks that you would see on a.
They're not to be, look like chimneys, but smokestacks.
Yes, but they are functional chimneys, there are outdoor fireplaces right here, and then there's one right here. So they are actual functioning chimneys, not just.
So they're not in the operations of the brewing, it's just for the fireplaces.
Sit outside on a cool evening like tonight with the fires crackling, and enjoy a River Dog IPA.
Yeah, I've already scoped out the one on the east side, I think that's where you're finding one. I do, I do have a question. One of the things that we're tasked with doing is trying to get people to have interconnectivity. Mainly, it's when you have a housing development or housing development. But you mentioned earlier, and we know that there's a potential of an apartment complex just to the north of there. Can we?
It's across the street, it's on the other side of Alclan Road.
I've actually, no, no, I know that one's in, but I've heard there's one coming just to the north of there too, potentially.
We've been talking about that one for years.
But as far as providing the ability to have interconnectivity, I don't know how we'd do that if there aren't plans for something else. You'd be open to that in the future.
We're going to purchase this, that property behind there, and we've looked at that property, but it's a difficult property. Certainly, if something comes along and.
Well, the, the ideal, okay, the thought behind it is you have Bluffton Park full of people that own golf carts. Technically, they can't drive their golf cart to your brewery because it's on forty-six. If there was some way to get interconnectivity that led to interconnectivity, that would help, but I just don't.
My office is already trying to scope out a path to get from this house.
Everything that it backs up to on the east is all the Bluffton Park area, so there wouldn't necessarily be a public access to be able to do that.
Well, unless that building just to the east of it gave an easement through. Well, unless that building just to the east of it gave an easement through.
A building.
Lots of, anyways.
If something comes along, I think that's probably for this future developer to ponder in their development plan.
Yeah, because I mean, you're not, yeah.
But you wouldn't be able to do it in the future.
Supposed to.
Because it would help, actually.
I just don't think it's something we can dictate.
Madam Chair, I'm going through some of the architectural things, just so I'm trying to shape a motion. And it's not, I know we're not quite there, but we're getting closer. So for the architectural ones, those are the ones where I'm still having a few things that I don't know what the idea is here. The first one is just acknowledging that the sign will not exceed that forty. But then the next one is the pavilion design and then additional information on ADA access. Number four, the roof pitches, what the feeling on the roof pitch item is. Number five, the metal siding material. They indicated that they would do the board and batten appearance, but on the plans, it's currently showing as corrugated, so that would need to be addressed if it is a condition. So the first three are the pavilion with ADA, the location, orientation, and ADA access. And then the roof pitch are the first two that I have question on still what direction that is.
ADA is part of the code, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's going to be addressed in the code, I would think.
It would, it's architectural still, so we'll need to say something.
But as far as the pavilion is concerned, what I, what I think we should do motion-wise is, as part of the motion, to say that if the applicant decides to put the pavilion in, that it must be rotated ninety degrees so that the opening is facing westward and away from the residence. That's, that's what I would be comfortable with with the pavilion. I don't know how everybody else feels on that.
And it would still have to come back through at that point. If we told them to.
And to me, I mean, I don't know how the rest of the commission does this.
I'm just wondering because of it.
All in, is that rather than having it pointing the wrong way?
I was just asking my question because if it is the frontage highway corridor, would we need, if they rotated it, would we need to see it in that context?
That would be up to you as to how that motion would be made. Whether it's, if, if it is ninety degrees, ninety degrees is a, a measured angle that I am capable of, of taking a look at. But if it is that you want to see how it's going to be incorporated into the site more, you could specify that as well.
So what, I'm sorry, y'all, we were having all different conversations. So are you, as the motion would be, they either eliminate it or they rotate it ninety degrees.
Oh, but if they choose to include the pavilion, that it should be rotated ninety degrees.
I think additionally, if you're doing that, because it can shift its location, it can shift the gardens around there. It, it can impact the site, especially in the frontage. I, I think that may be something we really want to be looking at again.
That's what I'm getting at. In the recommendation, then we would want to see if that were to be relocated, we, would we want to see it again or leave it up to staff?
Well, we could say that final, I mean, three of us are going to be in final.
But we don't review architecture for D O C.
But is it just being rotated, is what they're saying? No, no changes to the architecture itself, but just.
But then you've got that fence.
Why don't we ask the applicant what they're leaning towards?
Yeah, what is your feeling towards this?
Instead of making multiple options.
Just conversing with the commissioners. Our opinion would be to eliminate the pavilion. And then should we choose to add another piece of architecture, we'll go through the process and bring it to you and show you what the revisions are at a later date.
That's likely a clean option is to.
That's very clean.
To use your.
Okay. So on our recommendation, we would just say the removal of the pavilion. And if one was to come, if they wanted to add one, it would come back through, or it's not.
I, I think just as a, as a condition, just the removal of the pavilion.
Okay.
The next one is the roof pitch.
I think, I think that main one would need to be changed just because we don't want to, like I've been saying before, give one person allowance and not the other. So I think we need to be consistent with the code.
I hear what you're saying, but that, just, just, just thinking it through as a non-architect that puts that back building, that metal building up higher than that front building, do we really want to have that visual from forty-six? Does it matter? And I'm asking the two experts in this area up here.
I also, I just want to be very careful about it because we start doing exceptions here and there.
I have a question. With the way that the code is written, and it says a pediment, is it, does it mean a parapet? What does it mean by that?
Oh, it does say pediment in our ordinance, and it is something we need to definitely take a look at. However, parapets have been accepted to cover those spot walls because it then is no longer a flat roof that you are seeing. It is a, a building wall that is being seen instead. I, I see your concern, I acknowledge your concern.
Secondary question. Is the parapet wall that's on the front of that building, is that allowed to have the three and twelve pitch? Because it is a wall.
This one here, I believe. Yes, that's not one of the areas that has been called out as.
Well, it's a wall versus.
It's the wall, yeah, so the three and twelve is here. This one is three and twelve, but it's not called out in the report because it is that wall. It's a pitched wall. This one is, the three and twelve is the, the hyphen there. Then it's six and twelve here. This area, these, over the doors here is what you're seeing below.
What I'm trying to get at is the visible elevation is allowable as currently designed because the wall is allowed to have a three and twelve appearance. The wall, yeah, so what I'm just saying, the one that's facing the street is compliant. Two unarticulated elevations that are the metal building that are the issue seeing it from.
So could you keep that three, could you keep the look of that? If you did that, how high would you have to raise what you already have to hide the four? Or can you make the, the plate height down? Can you drop the plate height down to have that four twelve behind what you already have?
We don't have a lot of plate height to drop, but it is conceivable that if this stays three foot, we have to look at this knuckle right here that we could, I mean, it adds about six feet to the ridge height. And again, kind of to the neighbor's concern about this building, they're going to see the other side of this thing, and we're going to add another six feet, which is just going to make it even larger.
So what's above that area?
Of this area?
Is there a floor? I can't remember.
No, it's, it's.
It's open, right? So is there a minimum plate height for those outer edges? Can you drop them or is there a minimum height you're dealing with because of the production?
Minimum height for the inside fermenters that are twenty-three feet.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes. We don't need the center height, but we need the edge height. So we, we look, it started off as four twelve, like the previous one, it just got to, so we're asking for it. Due to the fact that it is located in the rear of the property, it's served, in order to keep the scale of the building smaller. Asking for revision. It is possible to Lydia's comments, Paul's comment, that we could keep the facade here and make, you know, if it's that important, make the four twelve behind the three twelve wall. I think it's kind of what you're leaving.
Yeah, I'm just, it's like, what we're seeing is a facade. A facade, and it's also per, like, it is compliant with the U D O. It's the two other elevations that not many people are going to see in our heavily planting that wouldn't be compliant. So I guess my question is, is it worth making the building taller and having a larger scale to hit that requirement?
I just don't want to set the precedent of doing that because we talk about this all the time with other buildings, and it just really bothers me that we let one person do one thing and someone else not. It's not just, I'm not just comparing the distillery, but there's been other buildings that have, that we've had that.
I, I understand the concern, but I think also you can state it's on a case-by-case basis. So there's a lot of factors that have been, you have been discussing, you know, proximity to adjacent property owners. You know, you want to restrict that, you know, less than that height. So I, I think you're okay in that standpoint. And to echo Mr. Iker's comments, the, the section of the code that provides that, that requirement, the four twelve middle pitch, also states that all structures shall be unobtrusive in a, the design, material, color that blend harmoniously with natural surroundings in a scale of neighboring architecture complying with the intent of the section. Highway corridor overly district standards are minimal. So it need to be worked on, apparently, so.
They do.
I'm sort of where Lydia is, I'm not sure I want a bigger, taller building.
So I think, again, I echo Mr. Iker's comments. I, I think that the U D O gives you some very minimal flexibility based off amassing and scale to potentially look at that and perhaps approve a deviation against of that three twelve, that four twelve minimum pitch height.
Well, my thought is I'd, I'd rather have the brick building up front be the primary visual when you're looking at it. And, and again, as a layman, I just don't, I'd hate to see that become big enough that that becomes the focal point when you're looking at that elevation. And if, if.
I, I think that there's.
I share your concern.
Well, I'm just saying there's other measures, but.
What's?
I just want to make sure that that's clear so that other applicants don't come in with this same thing and then we tell them no because of something else. I just want to make sure that's out and open and clear.
It's one of those, it, it's one of those issues with the U D O where we have a, a fixed, a, a fixed requirement to try to create a sense of uniformity within this district that expand, you know, that runs all the way along our highway corridor, overly district. So in, in, you know, the, the four twelve minimum pitch is there for a reason. But there is also, there are also other provisions in the highway corridor, overly district standards that I think would be, that seem to run counter to that. In particular, the scale and the amassing is, as planning commissioners discuss. So I, I think there's some very minimal flexibility there. I would be, I would again urge caution and deviating from those standards unless there's a, I mean, unless you have the ability, or the ability, unless you have a basis for doing so in that U D O.
For an example, we, we approved one with a lower pitch because there was a tree and there were tree limbs. So I just want to make sure.
Structure too.
Not the one I'm thinking of.
Oh, okay. We approved the porch on Cahill's also.
The what?
The porch on Cahill's. The porch on Cahill's, sorry.
Cahill's.
We approved like a two and twelve porch, yeah.
Yeah, that was very.
I just want to make it clear.
I think just the recording of this.
I have to protect all parties. I have a question for my architecture experts over here.
Lydia's architect, not me.
Well, people that know it better than I do. Is there a reason that that's, the ridge of that roof line where that's of concern on that back portion of the building can't, the top of that can't stay the same? And they then pitch it down from there and they. Yes, because the, the plate height, so where the wall starts. You have to understand, I don't know what you mean by plate. I'm finding it, so the height of where the wall, where the roof starts is a fixed height. It's at the minimum for what they need on the interior.
It has to have it start.
That's what he's saying.
The equipment that they have in the space.
There's a lot of voices.
Sorry. Based on the equipment in the space, it's the minimum height.
James, would you like to explain plate height and your equipment height and where the equipment is located and where the height needs to be?
I'm trying to. It's simple. So this, this building was started by what the minimum height of this section needed to be based upon the equipment sizes for a ninety gallon ferment, which is really tall. You can see the grain silos, you can see the spent grain silos, they're even taller. So these things sit right in here. And we went up four and twelve on the previous one and it ends up here. And we said, you know, that's really tall. I know we're going against the, we're just based upon it being in the back of this little facility. It's in the production side of things, keeping the scale. We said, well, we're going to show them three twelve so that it is not substantially higher than the front of house building facing the corridor. So that's where this all started. Minimum height here, up to four twelve, wow, that's really high. All right, let's go to three twelve, see if we can't make this thing look really good for all the things that we've discussed this evening.
And because you don't want this to look like the broadside barn, that's why you've got an architectural component in the center that raise, is raised to higher.
That's correct. We didn't want it to feel like it was just a flat facade. And again, I know what the U D O says. And a three twelve roof is.
I'm not saying the U D O is correct, I'm just saying we have a wall to go by.
Three twelve, this is not, and I know the intent of ours is to keep your traditional model building out of half and twelve and it look like this.
Sword building.
But, you know, the deviation between four and three, I think, is.
You realize her main concern is that you don't come back here in six months and say, well, you let me do it on the brewery.
Next, obviously, well, I got to do it on this one, so why can't I do it on that one?
There's five and a half acres of Old Town that are going to have the, you know, if I got hired to do another brewery like this, then.
It might not be a brewery, but in general, just.
I understand.
And I think this is one of those U D O edits that need to come up in a workshop.
I really, sidebar, but giving you all flexibility to make important judgments like that in staff, I think, is really key.
Okay, well, let's move on because we need to finish up. Well, I have, we have the authority to go, I mean, I understand the exception that it came from other, this is new construction, the, the reason, these are a lot of words that are coming out, real jumbled, it's a long day. This does not have to go to a B Z A, this kind of variation, this exception to the rule. This is within our purview to say, okay.
She said we did on Cahill's, we've done it on some other.
Well, I'm, but they were different circumstances as we've talked about.
So it, it really has, it gets down to the highway corridor, overly district and the language in there. We've had, U D O administrator has taken the position in the past that it does not require a variance, which would require, you know, a showing of an exceptional hardship to, you know, deviate from those specific design standards on the H C O D, the roof slope. So in our opinion, we think that that probably ties into the intent of the section and all of the preparatory language that leads into why that's in there. So it's, it's our opinion that y'all should have that authority under the current iteration. In other words, yeah.
Okay, so getting back to this, the siding, we're good with that, James. The board and bat, everybody's.
Board and bat, yeah.
The look of that, no. And then the unarticulated facade we talked about, you'll, you'll re-investigate that with certain undulations in or out on the, maybe the garage door areas.
That's correct, we will do that.
Are, is everybody comfortable with that? Okay. Landscaping, are there, is everybody comfortable with the things that Dan had described? Is there something additional you'd like to see or something that causes you to?
For the articulation along the north elevation, is that something that you are having them bring to staff for their review? Or is that?
How do we want to handle that?
What, and that's okay if that is the case. If you all trust that I can determine what articulation is appropriate on that, along with the rest of staff. If there's a specific something that you would like to see incorporated in that, please specify that as you make a motion, whether it's the awnings of a garage doors or the.
Well, I would say kind of like the way that James, would you like to describe it?
Would love to.
I'm thinking the way that James.
Do you want to schedule it?
Nope. No time for that.
There we go. All right, so you can see in this bay between column line, let's call it thirteen and ten, actually bump out and provide a facade here, maybe of hardy siding. That would help break up the metal roof. And then do the same thing here, so we actually get a projection with a four and twelve roof slope over it that would extend out maybe a couple of feet, actually provides protection and rain for the overhead doors. And then would actually break up the materials as well. We probably set that, it's like, whatever that is, twelve feet or so, kind of right up in this lane here on this side and this side to help break it up. I think the spent silos and the other equipment architecture features, while it's not architecture, I think actually is really cool and will help provide interest along the facade in addition to that.
And you said the board and bat, the metal board.
Metal board, I'm sure, hundred percent. Metal board, I'm sure, 100%.
Thoughts, questions?
Thoughts, I think that's good. I would just note for our conditions as we're listing them, I think the bracketed shed, like anything that can be a 4 and 12, we should probably make a 4 and 12, but.
Yes.
I'm okay with a parapet. Okay.
So is everybody understanding his explanation and his?
Yes, on that, and the last one is the manufacturer sheets for the cisterns, noting the size of them. We've had challenges with cisterns that have been beautiful on this and then had to be a third of the size for several projects throughout town. Both places that make the booths now and another location that has used it as a, it was a residential structure, actually, that had a, like, rain cistern that was a lot smaller than it appears on here, and since it is part of the articulation, if we can get those cut sheets, just to make sure that the everything's.
I'll get your cut sheets, they will be there, I promise you. They don't want to roll up us in my trailer, really, bringing it not having enough space to help it in there.
Okay, does that help you, Katie?
Yes.
So can we go to landscape?
I think. Okay, so real quick. My summary of what potentially could be motion at this time would be to approve the application with the following conditions. One, that they acknowledge that the sign may not exceed 40 square feet as a wall sign per our ordinance. That the pavilion be removed. Per staff, three, that the, any changes would need to be reflected, would need to go through the review through the town of Bluffton. The roof pitches on the awnings over the doors be increased to 4 and 12 anywhere that's possible, but the main mass and larger porches slash hyphen could remain as submitted in order to keep the mass down in keeping with the intent of the highway corridor overlay section 514. That the corrugated metal be changed to a board and batten metal to be reviewed at a staff level. The pavilion is gone, so there's no condition six. Per staff, seven, at staff level to break up the material with lower roof lines along the garage doors and change of materials if possible to be reviewed at a staff level. Per staff, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 15 will need to meet the minimum, potentially using the Parker's lighting to meet that minimum. 15 per staff, 16 through 19 per staff. And on the additional requirement that the fence type 2 privacy screening along the east property line be increased to eight feet in height.
I thought you were going to miss that one.
You doubt me.
So moves.
Again? Okay, do I have a second, a second? Any further discussion?
Well, on that one.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just wanted to thank you all. It's a big project, it's an important project.
Just remember that East Fireplace is my seat.
Little plaque on it. Right next to me, I hope that's okay.
We're not done, we're not done.
Not done.
Okay, adoption of the 2023 Planning Commission meeting dates. Jordan, come on now.
Captain got it.
I'm already over time on this one.
Yes, so here are the proposed Planning Commission meetings and application submission deadline schedules up on your screen. Does anybody have any concerns with these dates?
Right.
December 20th feels very close to Christmas.
Five days. Give or take.
Still feels very close.
Yeah, but if you move it, it wakes sooner than it makes it what, three weeks?
The 13th, which is still almost an entire month. I mean, that's still like 28 days after.
The, the problem with that sometimes, moving it to the 13th, then needing submission materials four weeks prior to the meeting, you're getting new submission materials prior to the meeting that you actually have the month before. And then it's potential conflicts with town council and other.
You just might have to be absent that day.
What's that?
You just might have to be absent that day.
I'm not kidding. Actually, we usually take it to Christmas and New Year, so it's just running up against my late at last minute Christmas shopping.
All right, so do I need a motion?
Yes.
Cooper?
Move to accept the Planning Commission's schedule as written.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Jordan, how about the adoption of the 2023 Development Review Committee meeting dates?
Some moves. All set.
You've got a motion, second.
Oh.
Really?
Okay.
The move to accept this presented in the paper.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
A second. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's the longest one we've had in a while.